September 12th, if you'll please stand for the invocation led by Commissioner English, and then the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Bain.
At this time, I'd just like to take a moment of silence for September 11th and remember what occurred there 17 years ago. Dear Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you for a beautiful day that you brought us. And Lord, we just ask that you just be with us tonight as we conduct our meeting in the orderly fashion for the citizens of Stafford County. Lord, also, we just ask that you be with all the folks that are along the coast with the hurricane that's coming, and that you just be with them and try to keep them safe. Be with the first responders as they're taking care of their lives also. Lord, we ask that you be with the military, law enforcement, and first responders here in our county to watch over those each and every day. Lord, ask all these things in the precious and glorious name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner English and Bain. Now, Mr. English, if you'd please call the roll.
Mr. Appicella?
Here.
Mr. McPherson?
Here.
Mr. Bain?
Here.
Ms. Vanuch?
Here.
Myself, Mr. Boswell?
Here.
Mr. Randall?
Here.
Madam Chairman, we have a form.
Thank you, Commissioner English. Any declarations of disqualification or disclosure this evening?
Madam Chair, just a disclosure, as we discussed, I will be, I'm feeling under the weather, so I'll be here for the public hearing portion and leaving after that, so when people see me leaving, it's just because I'm not feeling well, and I wanted to be here for the public hearing portion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner McPherson. Okay, now, moving on to the public presentations this evening, if you are here to speak on anything outside of the public hearings, you may come down to the podium for three minutes and speak. When the green light comes on, please state your name and address and the district you reside. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute left, and when the red light comes on, please conclude your comments. Would anyone like to come down and speak?
Paul Waldowski, 8 Pickett Lane, Gerri Mandard Rock Hill District. I also own property in the Gerri Mandard Griffiths Whitewater District. Oh, that's not one, that one's not Gerri Mandard, it's the other GW, that's Gerri Mandard. I still want to know why area code 717, which is in Pennsylvania, and I happen to know that area code 716 is in western New York. And for those of you who don't know how New Yorkers think, we call Pennsylvania Baja New York, that's lower New York. It's really New Jersey is whose it stood for. Now invocation starts with the word "in" in it, which is pretty powerful. Today is the eighth anniversary of the passing of my father, so I thought it would move me to come here today and just speak and see what's going on. It's ironic that Florence is the name of my mother, and she knows I like to create storms, especially in counties, you know? I just like to make you think, which is subjective, but I'm more concerned about you being objective. I do want to praise VDOT, who, I have my own acronym for them, but they fixed Enon Road finally, after I reported all the potholes. Remember, VDOT sometimes is very dumb on transportation, so be careful of what they do. Ah, let's see, what else? Oh, I got stuck on 630 today. We had a nice smash-up. I couldn't tell if it was the volunteer firemen who were doing it or the paid ones, but we finally got through after two miles of traffic. Had me worried about making it here at 6:30 PM. I know I'm retired, but I'd rather come here at 7:00 PM. Then I can get to the poker game later, and people have smaller stacks than me. I also saw the sign Liberty Knowles, you know? Who shot Liberty Knowles? Well, Ryan Holmes did, they're building it. And I want you all to go down Shelton Shop Road and look at Shelton Woods, and look at what you passed, and I hope the rain just comes and just, because you killed all my cicadas. You know, I am the chairman of the cicadas of 2030, they're going to graduate from high school in 2030, the 17-year-olds. I happened to see a cicada in the Griffiths Whitewater District just before my new tenant moved in. It's pretty interesting, one of the most interesting bugs on earth. And that's about it. You'll hear me for nine more minutes. I don't know what we're talking about, but I'll be here.
Thank you, Mr. Waldowski. Anyone else like to speak during the public hearing, or public presentations? All right, seeing no one come forward, now we can move on to the public hearings portion of tonight's meeting. Number one on the agenda is the reclassification of the Stafford Nursing Home and Retirement Community, which is a minor proffer amendment, and for this, we recognize staff member Mike Zaraf.
Good evening, if I could have the computer, please? Hey, good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the Commission, Mike Zaraf, the Planning and Zoning Department. This is a proffer amendment for a project known as Stafford Nursing Home and Retirement Community. This is a request to amend proffer conditions on two parcels, parcels 44F-2, I'll refer to as Parcel 2, and 44FF-2B, I'll refer to that as Parcel 2B in the presentation. The sum total of these two parcels is 16.77 acres. The applicant, Stafford SNF Investors LLC, with Charlie Payne as the agent for the applicant. The site is highlighted in red and located on the east side of Brea Church Road and along both sides of Brimley Drive, which is the main street through this, through this community. Site itself is zoned LC, that's Life Care Retirement Community, and to the south is another portion, the third parcel, of the original LC rezoning that occurred several years ago. This site to the south has an existing nursing home, which is not subject to, not part of this proffer amendment. Other surrounding zoning and uses, you have R1 zoning to the north and east in the yellow shade shaded properties. Those are single-family detached homes in the England Run and Brea Knowles subdivisions. And to the south and east is M1 Light Industrial Zone property in the Stafford Industrial Park, where you have some flex office warehouse uses and some undeveloped land as well. So, in the presentation, I use a few acronyms, so kind of in an attempt to kind of minimize confusion, I want to just point out these and clarify their meaning. So AL, that's, refers to assisted living. IL, the assisted living dwelling unit types. IL is independent living dwellings. Also, AL and IL density is measured kind of differently, is referred to differently at times. Typically, assisted living is measured by the number of permitted beds, and independent living is measured by the number of dwelling units. So, to kind of establish an appropriate comparison, we, between the two uses, we kind of say, we'll assume that one independent living unit equals two beds in one of those units. So, looking at the zoning history, back in March of 2008, land was originally rezoned to the Life Care Zoning District for the retirement community. A year later, in June of 2009, the site plan was approved for the entire facility. In August of 2009, the proffers were amended to allow for some phasing and temporary access because the initial street, Brimley Drive, was not complete. And then also, in June of 2014, the proffers were amended, it was the first amendment, to increase the maximum number of assisted living beds from 127 to 142, and concurrently decrease the independent living units from 240 to 207. And just last year, the proffers were amended again to increase flexibility between the independent living and assisted living units. That last amendment, it modified the mix of dwelling unit types permitted on the property to basically allow the approved number of beds to be either assisted living beds or independent living units. And then there were some conditions that there'd be at least 100 independent living units through the full build-out on the remaining site, that's currently undeveloped, and then at any one time, no less than 30 independent living units in place. This amendment would permit, that amendment that occurred permitted the remaining development to include assisted living or independent living units. So it allowed more flexibility than you had before. Also, the amendment would have allowed the existing facility to adjust the level of care it offered as needs changed into the future. So, looking at the aerial view of the site and the existing conditions, the subject area includes the two highlighted parcels that I've mentioned. Parcel 2 has been fully developed as part of the original project with structures and associated vehicle travel ways and parking. That's the crossings at Falls Run is a facility on that site. It has 142 assisted living beds and 46 independent living units, which would equate to 92 independent living beds. Parcel 2B has been graded, and it does include a 42-space parking lot with the remainder of the site vacant. The parking lot does provide required parking for both the crossings at Falls Run and the existing nursing home facility, which is just to the south that you can see outside of the blue shaded area. This is an image of the original general development plan that was approved. The GDP shows how the current uses fit into the overall original development scheme. The GDP identifies the location of the current and planned uses. Parcel 2 identifies the existing crossing at Falls Run Facility with the structures and parking developed as originally, much mainly as originally envisioned in that site. Parcel 2B identifies a potential for three separate buildings identified as including independent living units. Parcel 2B has not been fully developed and currently just contains the small parking lot, as mentioned. So going through the amendments that are proposed, first, this amendment proposed to Proffer 2, which would modify the GDP that would apply, this GDP would apply specifically to Parcel 2B, and it illustrates development of a proposed single-story, 90-bed nursing home in place of the previously approved, the three buildings that were proposed. The plan submitted?
Mike, real quick, how many beds were in the other one?
That one, well...
Sorry?
It was a number of units or beds, and I'd have to do a little math to kind of figure that out.
Maybe Charlie will probably know later.
So, and I may, I actually may mention that later, I think I have that information later on the later slide, so we'll maybe get to that. The plan with the proffer amendment identifies the location of the nursing home on the site. Access to the facility would be provided via two entrances off of Brimley Drive. Just for reference, Brimley Drive runs in this, so this map is reoriented from your other maps. Brea Church Road is in this location, and here's Brimley Drive, and here's your two access points.
So, Mike, if I could, Madam Chair, if I could ask a question? So Parcel 2 is below us, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we're looking at, the Brimley Road is the one that they built to access both sides of that?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
So then, you have a travel way and parking spaces circling the building on three sides. A portion of the travel way encroaches into the resource protection area buffer slightly in this location here. The encroachment will be evaluated during the site plan process. It may also require approval by the Chesapeake Bay Board, but that will get determined at that, at that time. The 75 required parking spaces for the new nursing home would be accommodated within this parcel. The 42 parking spaces that are currently on the proposed nursing home site provides 40 required spaces for the other existing uses. So, this nursing home would displace those existing parking lot spaces. The general development plan proposes relocation of the 40 spaces in the following way. Four of the spaces would be included on this site. Then also, 25 parallel parking spaces are proposed along Brimley Drive, and then 11 spaces would be added to the crossings at Falls Run property on the other side of Brimley Drive. So prior to approval of the site plan for the nursing home, those 40 parking spaces are going to have to be accommodated on the site plan in another way, and as, either as mentioned or in some other fashion. Staff report did note fire and rescue concerns about the amount of parking and the impact on fire lane concerns and pedestrian hazards. Since the release of this staff report, the fire and rescue staff has had additional discussions with the applicant, and they got a more of an understanding of what was going on and is okay with the proposal and parking. They got a better understanding that the amendment is comprehensive in that it addresses the parking that's required for the current facilities and how that can be handled. They may, they note that they may provide additional suggestions at the site plan stage to consider additional, adding additional parking above what's already required to further improve the parking conditions on this, in this complex. Another amendment would be to Proffer 3 that deals with phasing and access. This is kind of an outdated proffer. Initially, when the project was being developed, the existing nursing home was the first project, part of the, of the project. There, the nursing home is off, is immediately adjacent to Brandywine Court in this location, which is through the adjacent industrial park. So, through the amendment, the nursing home got initial primary access via Brandywine Court, and part of that required a temporary access via the alignment of Brimley Drive as a, it was, it was a gated kind of temporary access because it didn't meet, the road didn't meet full state requirements or full, full requirements, so there was secondary access via Brimley Drive until the full access to, and intersection improvements to Brea Church Road were constructed. And then, future phases then required Brimley Drive to be fully built, and that has happened, and they basically flipped now, so primary access is via Brimley Drive and secondary access is, is via Brandywine, via gated access. And that's all been done, satisfied, so they're proposing that be deleted. So, Proffer 5 is another change. This would reduce the number of assisted living beds or independent living units and beds from 556 to 346, and restrict these unit types to Parcel 2, where the crossings facility is located. And then add that the 90-bed nursing home facility would be permitted as the only use on Parcel 2B. So, evaluating this, this change, this...
I'm sorry, so that's a net reduction in overall residents?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
So, the limitation on the location of the assisted living and independent living unit beds would be to Parcel 2, and that would be reflected in the reduction from 556 to 346. Then also, the proffer would keep a requirement that you have at least 30 independent living units to still require at least some mix of independent living and assisted living units. And overall, the amendment would result in a net reduction of 120 residents, I think maybe is what you were getting at, Madam Chairman, with the question. So this would result, be a result of 210 fewer potential independent living, assisted living beds on Parcel 2B, but then adding 90 nursing home beds. Then also, the amendment does reduce the likelihood for new, new independent living units and corresponding cash proffers. Proffer 6 does require contributions of approximately $8,000 per independent living unit. No contributions are required for assisted living or nursing home beds. The contributions have been made for the existing 46 independent living units in the amount of approximately $367,000. Additional contributions could be made only if the current assisted living beds that are in the crossings facility were to be converted over to independent living units. That could happen. There are no current plans for this to occur, but if it does, then the applicant would be required to pay additional proffers if that change was to happen. There could be up to 115 independent living units in that facility while still maintaining a minimum amount, a minimum required amount of assisted living beds. So there could be an additional $919,000 in proffers collected if the facility was to change and become more of a, of a place for independent living units. But again, there's no, there's no specific plan for that to happen.
Hey, Mike, real quick, so am I following this right? So they're reducing the amount of independent living units?
That could be, happen, that could occur in the future.
Okay, but we get proffers for those?
Right.
And they're replacing it with nursing home beds of 90, right?
Yes.
Where we get no proffers?
No proffers, no.
Okay.
Some of the other minor amendments that are proposed, with Proffer 9, the amendment to Proffer 9 would amend the timing of the recreation proffer that would require the remaining contribution of $50,000 to be provided in a single payment prior to occupancy of the nursing home. $50,000 of the, of a required $100,000 has already been, been contributed during prior phases of the project. The proffers require final payments of, in two $25,000 payments, and those were tied to two of the remaining three buildings that were envisioned. But now, since the amendment only has, would have potentially one more building, the applicant did modify that proffer to basically just play, pay the remainder prior to occupancy of the nursing home. So Proffer 10, that deals with travelway standards. This increases all onsite private travelway with requirements from 18 feet to 22 feet, consistent with ordinance requirements. Proffer 24 deals, is a proffer related to the existing nursing home. This deletes a proffer that applies to the existing nursing home facility because it's not subject to this proffer amendment, because this, these amendments only apply to the other two properties. Then Proffer 28, that's a proffer dealing with site cleanup, and that was prior to the initial development of the site. It deletes a previously satisfied proffer requiring waste cleanup in the RPA buffer along Falls Run.
Mike, quick question.
Yeah.
Proffer 24 has been completely satisfied? The one that's going to be deleted?
Proffer 24 would, to get the language of that, but that, that would still, still be in place on the existing nursing home site. So, that language...
I just know for Proffer 28, you said previously satisfied. I didn't see previously satisfied for Proffer 24, so I just wanted to check. If it hasn't been satisfied, we don't, probably don't want to delete it, right?
Catch that? It, it completely refer... So basically, that Proffer 24 still exists on the nursing home site. It says the area south of the designated perennial stream, and as designated on the GDP, will not be utilized for any independent living units and only as a nursing home facility. So, that requirement still applies on that nursing home site. So, it, it's a restriction. It doesn't have to do, deal with something being satisfied or not, it's more of a use restriction, and that still is in place on that existing nursing home.
Okay, but you said, but they say they're going to delete that, so that's my confusion.
It's deleted from the, from...
The existing.
Well, let me show you. So it's deleted from the areas shaded in blue because it doesn't, it's an area that doesn't apply.
Okay, all right, thanks.
So it's still where the area is circled in red, that's, that proffer still applies there, still requires that to be a nursing home. And this all ends up getting very confusing because you're changing some proffers and not others.
I mean, is the reason it's being removed because of the change in the GDP that makes it moot?
It, it's more so just that these proffers are applying to, doesn't, that don't apply to that property.
Gotcha.
I mean, it could remain and not, it wouldn't necessarily be the end of the world if it still exists, you know, still left there in the, in the proffers, but it's kind of more of a, more of a housekeeping type of thing. So looking at the overall evaluation, the positives, it's, the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan, as the existing zoning is in compliance with the suburban future land use designation, and the amendments to the proffers will not affect the previously approved residential land use of the area. The, also, the adjustments from the independent living units and assisted living beds to nursing home beds decreases the overall number of residents in the facility. It allows for the development to adjust its residential offerings based on changing needs, and then also the proffer amendments update non-applicable or previously satisfied development standards. And I had already, we listed in the staff report, the, as a negative, the concerns from fire and rescue about the parking concerns, and as I noted, this negative aspect stemming from their concerns has been satisfied to their, by fire and rescue. And staff is supportive of the amended proffers pursuant to ordinance 018-41 and recommends approval, and we'll turn it back for any questions.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike so far? Mr. Bain?
I have a few. In your presentation on Proffer number five, you're saying modify the mix of dwelling types on Parcel 2 in such that it would restrict it from 556 to 346 units?
Yes.
Or is that beds? I'm, I'm a little confused about that first.
Yeah.
Is it beds?
Well, it's, it's stated as beds, which it basically would have the equivalency of, you know, two beds per one, so you'd take half of that for the number of units that would apply.
I don't think that cleared up my confusion.
So...
If it's a unit, don't...
Because it's always, the way we look at it is one unit would have two beds.
Two beds, so if it's 346 units, it would double it.
No, it's, it's beds, it's stated as...
It's beds, okay, it's beds, that's good. Then I go back to your existing conditions, which was page five of your handout, and you indicated there that Parcel 2 has been fully developed. And if my math is right, you have 142 assisting living beds and 46 independent living units, which is 92 beds, and the sum of 142 and 92 is 234. So if it's fully developed, why would you allow 346 beds? Why shouldn't that 346 be 234 unless they have plans to expand on Parcel 2? Maybe my math is wrong, or I'm confused about beds, beds and units.
I think that what you're saying is that Parcel 2 equals 234 beds, and they're asking for 346 beds, but what, and that was in the proffers was the max of whatever you just said, which equals 112 were left over. So they should be asking for 112, so we're essentially giving them more beds by this proffer amendment? If I'm trying to, if I'm trying to... If I'm trying to, if I'm trying to-
That's sort of what I'm getting at. Instead of 234, they're asking for 346. And yet, it says that it's fully developed.
Yeah, if I could, Madam Chair, to build on that, is it fully developed or is it not fully developed? If it's fully developed, then we wouldn't expect to have any more, anything added to parcel two.
I think that as far as the building area, it's, it's pretty much maxed out, and I guess-
So the maximum amount of beds that are going to be on parcel two is 234, not the, not the stated 556 down to 346. It would be 556 down to 234 because it's fully developed, and we're not adding any more beds to parcel two.
I guess their potential might, might happen where, and I'm probably going to have to defer to the applicant's address, because this is how they propose this, there, if there's any interior modifications that might allow for more beds to go within the existing building, that's something maybe for them to-
Over 100 beds? Wow. That would be jamming them in.
I know.
Going from queen size to twin.
Okay, well, that, we'll see, we'll see if the applicant has something to say on that. The other, other issue that I was very confused about on the drawings, the tabulation for parking spaces did not make a lot of sense to me. Let me find that now. On sheet two. I was working at home off the little drawing, so it was rough. They, the applicant has indicated there that as part of the requirement, there are the number of spaces for the beds and for employees, and then it says 22 spaces for parcel 44FF-1 and 18 spaces for parcel 44FF-2. Why are those, what are, what are those being required for if it's a requirement?
Those are listed because those are currently being accommodated on that property, and right now-
Those are the overflow parking.
Those are the 40 spaces that they need to accommodate somewhere in this complex, and-
Okay, that was not clear to me. And they then say further down, provided future on parcel 44FF-2, 11 spaces. 44FF-2 is parcel two, is it not?
Yes.
And parcel two, you've already said is fully developed, and looking at the layout for parcel two, I don't know where they're going to find more spaces. So that I find very questionable that they could accommodate that. Then I looked at the layout drawing for the proposed building, and I just, the, the parking does not seem to add up.
Can I ask the question in a different way? With respect to the proposed use and the parking spaces, is that intended to accommodate the number of parking spaces for that use as currently required by our parking standards plus the 40 spaces that are already there?
The current sites, the, the parcel two B, they would have enough spaces to accommodate that nursing home site.
Plus the 40?
Plus four extra. Then the other spaces are, as I kind of mentioned, they, they're proposing adding parallel parking spaces along Brimley Drive.
Okay, can you, do you have a?
These are kind of, I'll kind of mark it in with a highlighter here.
We're, we're not seeing the map on the screen.
If you can bring the computer up, please. So along Brimley in red, there are parallel parking spaces proposed.
How, how wide is Brimley?
I'm not certain the total width, but I did scale it out. It appears that the, you know, they're going to have to make sure that those spaces still can accommodate a adequate travelway.
So is that one of the concerns that fire rescue mentioned, that parking spaces along Brimley?
And, and from scaling it out, it looks like it still exceeds 22 feet in width, with the parking spa, with the parallel parking spaces, which would be one of the requirements. And so you have them, the spaces on each side in these locations.
So, again, just to kind of build out this conversation, how many parking space, how many parking spaces are proposed as part of this change? The ones on Brimley and around the, this use?
I think the total was 115. But I'm not, I'm not sure I understand how they can provide more spaces when they had to build overflow parking for the existing building.
I, I think it just depends on how many spaces are required for this building, right? Plus the ones that they already had. That's what I'm trying to get at. So how many, how many spaces be, would be required for this use?
For this use, 75 spaces.
So that goes to the, what, 115?
Yeah, that's part of the 115. And then the remainder are the 25 on-street spaces, and then 11 spaces are kind of what they list as, that they, they would accommodate over in the parcel two, which we're questioning how, how that will happen.
I, I think I would want to see how they're going to accomplish that.
The applicant can, may be able to address that. They did talk about it. There may be an area along one of the travelways where that can be, that can be added in. So I would ask the applicant to try to help explain where they're, they're planning that.
The final issue I wanted to bring up, looking at this site, and I realize this is something that's dealt with down the road with the land development plan, I don't see where they can provide stormwater management on-site. They're that close to the stream. Underground storage probably would not work because of the hydraulics. So it's just, just a comment that I, I really am concerned about that type of issue with this site.
Underground storage is provided over in this area of the site.
Off-site? Off, off of site two B?
Yes, and-
Is that existing?
It's existing, and on my understanding, it was designed to accommodate development of parcel two B.
Oh, okay. That was not mentioned, so. All right. Thank you.
So, just so I'm clear, the 42 spots that are currently on two B, parcel two B, are they there as a requirement to meet the parking ordinance for the, those, the development on parcel two?
Forty of the spaces would be forty of the-
Forty of the, 42 are required?
Are required, and therefore, some of them are for parcel two and some of them are for parcel one, which is the existing nursing home.
Which is the nursing home at the bottom of the, okay. All right. The private travelway that you mentioned in proffer 10, is that the Brimley Road that you're talking about?
That would include Brimley Road, Brimley Drive, and travelways throughout, through the, the development, through the, through the site.
So, so in proffer 10, we're talking about increasing, widening Brimley Road from 18 feet to 22 feet? Is that what it says?
It is already wider. It is just making, making sure that the travelways maintain 22 feet width. It's, it's already wider.
It's already at 22 feet?
It's, it's more than that.
Okay. All right. So why would they proffer something if it's already more than that?
Well, because they're, they're looking to add in the parallel spaces that don't exist now.
Okay, so how, okay, so currently, it's not, it's wider than 22, but not wide enough to handle the parallel parking spaces that they plan to put there?
I believe it is. It's just this will ensure that that's maintained.
Okay. I guess I would need probably a little more specificity that says how, how wide it will be when they're finished, so that we know that there's adequate parking as well as a travelway for both incoming and outgoing traffic. So, okay. All right, and then I have the same concerns about the, the parking. I guess I would need to see a little more of the parking. This parking that they've identified is based on the current parking ordinance, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay. I don't see any more questions. I just have one thing I want to mention to you, but I'll let Charlie answer it in his presentation. Since the parking's going to be so far away from the building, what are they going to do, like sidewalks or whatever, to make it easily accessible for people maybe that are in wheelchairs or that are handicapped and who are dealing with the elderly, to make it easy for them to get from point A to point B, so?
I know there's sidewalk along the one side, and so-
Maybe have a valet there or something.
Right.
Like the VA. Awesome, thank you. Come on down. I know you have to be quick tonight, so we'll, we'll hold all of our questions till the end. Maybe you can address some of them, because I know-
That's okay, there's already been a lot of-
What time do you need to be out of here by?
Well, I'm good.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, well, I'll get there in time. I appreciate you accommodating me to be up here first. Charlie Payne, represent the applicant, appreciate your time this evening, and thanks for staff. I think they've covered a lot of bases, and there've been a lot of questions, just for purposes of the GDP and parking and stormwater management, access, those kind of things. I'm going to have Mark King answer those questions if you still have them, if they weren't answered. I think, I think the interesting thing here is you've got a, a fairly built-out development. It was initially proposed, obviously, for two phases. The first phase was the 90-bed nursing home facility, which is done. And then the second phase was two buildings. It's the building that's currently there that this planning commissioner approved last year for an amendment to give us a flexibility to move AL and IL around, which is assisted living and independent living. We, we saw a need, still see a need for AL, also see a need, obviously, for skilled nursing, which is why we're here, asking for a proffer amendment on the second building of phase two. So that's not built yet. So that's why we're here for the, for the proffer amendment. So I know there's been a little confusion on, you know, what's out there now, what currently is in sight. On-site now, just to answer Mrs. Venucci's question, there are, there are 46 IL units currently on-site. We have the capacity to build 115, build out 115 units, so the capacity is not maxed for beds in the current building one of phase two, if that answers your question, which is parcel two on your GDP.
So then, to answer the question, it's not fully developed? There is some, there is some more developmental?
No, the building's built.
Okay.
Maxed, it's already built out to handle the beds, the number of beds, and the number of people that can be in the facility. So we're not going to expand that building anymore. But it's not, there's, we haven't filled it up, the beds, if you will, completely yet. So we've got 127 AL units in there today, 46 IL. We have the ability to go, we have a license for 142 AL, and we have the ability to go up to 115 IL, if that answers your question. Remember, IL is a unit, so you multiply it by two for beds, and AL are beds. I know it's confusing, but that's how they're licensed, so I apologize for any confusion there. So what we were approved initially were 556 beds for parcel two and parcel two B, okay? So collectively, for those two buildings, it was to be 556 beds. So what we're doing is reducing that number by 210 overall beds and replacing that delta with 90-bed nursing, skilled nursing facility. Hopefully, that addresses any confusion, so I apologize for all of that.
So really quickly, what does that do to the proffers, then? Because the-
Well, well, proffers is-
ILs get proffers.
Yeah, you can remember, we could go IL or AL, so there might not be any IL, and it'd just be AL, so you wouldn't get proffers anyways if it was just all AL. We could always go to IL in the future, which would give us the ability to go up to 115 total, I think, was the number, which would bump up the proffer number another 900,000, as staff has reported. But I can go through kind of what we paid already in proffers. Also, if you don't have IL, you don't have the assumed impacts, if you would, for having IL. But we can still do IL in building two, phase two, building one, sorry, that's currently there, and we can max that out to 115 today. That's units.
But it's not maxed out right now?
It's not maxed out right now. Correct. Okay? Sorry for all the confusion. Anyways, I do have a quick PowerPoint that I can walk through fairly quickly, I hope. Can I, can I have the computer, please? Thank you, Mr. Harvey. And I can move this, right? Okay, great. Since this is, this was initially approved in 2009, the market at that time, I was a little different. We all thought that there would be a sort of age-in-place development, life care development. It's still very possible, but things have changed, people living longer, some people went back to work. There's been a greater need in this area for AL and now nursing, skilled nursing facility. But we have built out, like I said, most of the proposed development, including the 90-bed nursing home facility, which is currently there today. And also, just to avoid confusion on all the changes in the proffer amendments, you're seeing, the 90-bed, current 90-bed facility is a different tax map parcel. So all the proffers that run with that tax map parcel continue today or aren't impacted by this proffer amendment. So your question about it just be nursing home facility and not AL and IL continues today, as staff noted. It's just not part of this proffer amendment because that parcel is not impacted by this. Okay? So sorry for that confusion as well. Just gets a little confusing, get multiple parcels and multiple uses. Again, the request is to address the minor changes to the GDP, which we have stated, and again, we'll go through some of the parking questions if you still have them. And again, this is the second building in phase two to be developed as a, as a maximum 90-bed skilled nursing home facility. What's the genesis of this? What is, one, the Commonwealth of Virginia has determined that this planning district 16, Stafford is included, has a need, a significant need for skilled nursing beds by 2020, which is going to take us that long to get the facility up in place if we were to get approved.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
What's that you want to say? Skilled nursing, what do you mean by skilled nursing homes? When you say skilled, is that going to be like rehabilitation also, or is it just like a flat nursing home?
It's a nursing, it's a nursing home facility, correct.
It's 24-hour care.
Yeah, because of- 24-hour care, seven days a week.
That's the reason for the skilled.
Right, and it's a different licensing procedure as well.
Okay.
More, maybe just to put it in kind of layman terms, a greater need of care than assisted living, your next level.
You could also call it long-term care.
Long-term care.
That's, yeah.
Thank you. We have determined, not just us, the Commonwealth of Virginia has determined that there's a need in this district. In fact, Stafford will have the greatest amount of population, age population growth in any other district, any other jurisdiction in the planning district 16. There's a new statute, fairly new statute out, that allows planning districts to transfer these beds. Of course, you guys know this has to go through a process. The state has to approve the need for these beds in any jurisdiction. It's a very difficult process, a very complicated process. When there's already been an approval, now you have a unique opportunity to transfer those beds. As that also requires approval, but obviously, it's a little bit different process. So we have done that. We have, planning district 22, the Eastern Shore, there was a termination, they had too many beds licensed, so now we have the ability to transfer those beds to Stafford County. Without the transfer, as I stated, we think it'd be very difficult to get those beds here anytime soon. Planning district 16, I'm sure you're all familiar with it, includes Stafford, the city of Fredericksburg, Spotsylvania, Kingsmore, and Caroline County. You can see, number nine is the hospital, but you can see, other than the star where we are, which is number four, only Woodmont, which is a fairly older facility, is in Stafford County. We have the greatest population, we have the greatest aging population, and by 2021, you're going to see that we're going to be in significant need of this. And here are the numbers, and this is done by the Weldon Cooper Group, currently approved of 208 in Stafford. By 2020, we're going to need 287, and then by 2021, we're going to need 305, so we're 97 short. So this 90 would cover that gap. And you can see that's significantly more than any of the other jurisdictions in PD16.
If I can ask you real quick, does that include the transfer from district 22?
It doesn't.
These numbers?
That number, this is just what's in need. This is not what's, so what we have today are 208, was approved in Stafford County.
How would the, the transfer rights, though, affect this? I mean, I know this is just the need, but-
So we have a gap of 97? So the transfer rights would actually help us fill that gap.
Okay.
So right now, we have 208 approved, so we need to add, and by 2021, we'll need 305, so that delta is what this, this is going to help fill. Yes, sir. Here's the approval that we got from Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Health, allowing us to make the transfer, and that was just recently done. Again, this is a unique opportunity for Stafford County to obtain those necessary beds for our community, allows our community who are aging to age in place, be close to their families. I hear tons of horror stories where folks have to go long distances to see their loved ones, so we'd like to keep them in Stafford County, keep them in the community. These, these facilities are very positive net, net tax revenue generators, so just to kind of go to your question about proffers, these do generate significant taxes for the county, and they do create high-paying, higher-paying wages, because it is a skilled nursing facility, which requires skilled technicians and skilled healthcare personnel on-site. which requires skilled technicians and skilled healthcare personnel on site. Total project cost investment is $9 or $10 million, you know, of course, heavy construction jobs as well locally. You probably have in your packets, I hope you do. We have signed petitions in support of this project, about 60-some people who know the facility very well, and who have relationships and family members who have been there and part of it. And Mary Washington Healthcare has also provided strong support for the, for the project. And here's a letter from Dr. McDermott, who is the president and CEO of Mary Washington. As you can see in his letter, he has a strong relationship with the current facility and has identified that the need is real, and it need, and he's encouraging this use in Stafford County. Again, many of the residents who are in our current facility are from Stafford. The current facility, as the Fire Marshal always wants to ensure, is fire, completely fire sprinkles, 24-hour supervision and care, and a residence will live in a more modern building. That is extraordinarily important, certain from a, from a healthcare preventive, preventive injury and from a ability to react to healthcare needs. Station 12, the Brea Fire and Rescue, is located less than two miles away.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
On number 12, so it used to be, and I think it's still the case, when somebody gets transferred by the rescue squad, say, to the hospital, that person has to pay some fee, or their insurance pays that fee. In this case, if somebody gets transferred to a hospital, who pays that fee?
Do you know? Mr. Culp, who's the administrator of the facility, is here as well. He likely can answer that question.
I probably need to come up and-
Come up here, sorry.
So the, when someone transfers to a hospital from, from a skilled nursing facility, that is either pay, it's paid by their insurance, either Medicaid or Medicare, it's covered under those, under those fees that we get already, or, and so they are covered, as well as, and typically, if they're on a private insurance, that is also covered by them.
Okay, thanks.
Again, the applicant is still-
Madam Chairman? I'm sorry. For the record, could we identify who the gentleman was who just spoke?
Mr. Jeffrey, Mr. Jeffrey Culp, who's the administrator, follows run.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
Again, as we established, we can still provide up to 69 additional IL units in Building One of Phase Two. Proffers, just to, just to reiterate, we've already paid 368,000 in cash proffers for the 46 IL units, and as you recall from our last proffer amendment, they, that can't be refunded or changed, and that will stay. We've already made the road improvements at Brea Church and 17 and Fleet, which is, was estimated at 582,000 at the time. We are paying the additional 50,000. Knocking out the IL and AL units would have negated that 50,000, but we decided to go ahead and pay that, we thought that was important to do as well. All the entrance improvements, as you know, if you've been there, have already in place and have been made. Again, sprinkler system, consistent with proffer 19 stays in place, and the emergency gate stays in place. Those are just some key proffers to bring to your attention, not all of them. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions to the right? Questions to the left? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Planning Commissioner.
All right, any additional question? Oh, we got to do the public hearing. Okay, so, since we don't have any questions for staff or the applicant, now we'll open up the public hearing for the public. So if you're here to speak on this issue, please come down to the podium. You have three minutes to speak. When the green light comes on, when the yellow light comes on, you have one minute. When the red light comes on, please wrap up your comments, and when you come down, state your name, address, and the district that you reside for the record. Would anyone like to come down and speak?
I already gave my name and address, Paul Waldowski, Eight Picket Lane, Cherry Mandard, Rock Hill District. Yes, I am a senior citizen, and you would have to wheel me there to do assisted living, because there are sidewalks to nowhere. My main concern is safety. I don't think Station Number 12 can get in there and get out and safely help someone who might need the help, unlike what I see on the other side of Eight Picket Lane in the over 55 community, where Station 14 visits almost daily. Just because someone brings you letters from people and they make these assumptions, let's get some facts. There's Medicaid and Medicare. Medicaid does not pay for a private room. Look it up, I have firsthand experience. You must supplement someone's room if it's a private room, if they're in assisted living. Now, anyone that's my age and a baby boomer, we're never going to do IL in some facility, because we'd have to be ILL, we'd have to be real ill to go to IL. So what you're talking about is you're giving projections of 2020 and 2021, and it's all subjective. This does not meet the comprehensive plan, it's a subjective statement. Staff pointed out to you, you don't have ample parking. Just because you add four feet to something, doesn't mean anything. If you're on a secondary state road, you need to park the right way. You have so many opportunities here, because I'm not with the Board of Supervisors, they call it issues. So you have many opportunities here, and the applicant has failed to show to the public, because I'm, I represent the public, because I'm the only one who tries to understand this, and I can see, most of you are confused. This looks to me like the first time you saw this. It's like, oh my goodness. So once again, just because staff recommends something, I don't see anyone on staff who knows anything about Medicaid or Medicare, or who's ready to do it. You got to go on Medicare when you're 65, been there, done that.
Thank you, Mr. Waldowski. Would anyone else like to come down and speak? Okay, seeing no one rushed the podium, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on item number one and bring it back to the Planning Commission. Do we have any, actually, I want to bring it back to the Planning Commission and then bring it back to Charlie. Would you like to come up and address any of the concerns brought up by the public?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Charlie Payne, represent the applicant. I don't know if you have any additional questions for me, if you want me to answer Medicaid questions, I'm happy to do that, but most of the patients who are in nursing, nursing homes are on Medicaid, they can't have private rooms, they have shared rooms, and I've got an aunt who's on that program today. So, any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Anybody have any questions for Charlie? No? Okay, I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any questions for staff? Are we ready to do something? Mr. Payne, this is in your district.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Waldowski was, was right. I'm still a little confused about the parking issues, and counting beds and ILs and ALS. I would really like to see a more definitive plan for those extra parking spaces that are just sitting out in space right now and have not been addressed on the drawings that we have been provided. I think that's an important issue. So I think I'd like to make a motion to defer this application until we can get some supplemental information from the applicant.
Okay, so we have a motion to defer. Do you have a timeline on that? It's due by December 21st. Do you have a meeting that you would like to see it back? I think we have a April 26th, or April, oh my God. Sorry, not April. September 26th, October 10th, October 24th, and November 14th are the next ones that we have.
Would October 10th work for the applicant?
You can come on down, you can come up.
Even, I mean, September 26th would be acceptable to me if-
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have a tight timeline because of the, the approvals from the state, and we have to get moving pretty quickly. We, we, we can answer the parking questions, and we're happy to do that tonight, if that would be helpful.
I don't think we can do it now that there's a motion on the floor. I don't think we can discuss that. Rashida, Ms. McLendon.
Madam Chairman, you actually need a second, then once you have a second, you're allowed to, you're allowed to pursue a discussion.
Okay, so let's get, get you a date, maybe September 26th.
26th of September-
That's fine.
-this year.
So, so there's a motion on the floor, hang on, a motion on the floor to defer this until September 26th. Do we have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, September 26th, by Mr. Payne, a second by Mr. English. Any comment, Mr. Payne?
No.
Mr. English?
No, I'm just opening for CJ.
Okay, discussion?
What I think I'm hearing, though, irrespective of comments, is that we want to see something on paper to understand where the parking spaces will be, how, how wide Brimley, is it Brimley Road is? So it's, that part is a little unclear, how the parking is associated with the new building versus the old building. So some-
That's right.
Some kind of visual that helps us understand the, the parking layout and how, how it accommodates both the current needs and the future needs.
Correct.
I do have a question.
Mr. Randall.
Mr. Payne, I have a question for you, if you'd like to. So, based on, based on the current parking ordinance, how many parking spaces do you expect to, to build for the, we know 40 have to go back to parcel one, right? The first phase of part of, of two, right? 40 have to go back over there.
Before I answer that question, Mark, do you want to, our civil engineers here, we can probably answer that question a lot better than they may.
Sure, that's fine. Just have him identify himself when he gets to the podium, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mark King with Bowman Consulting Group. The question that everybody's had about this parking, there are some existing parking spaces on this parcel. Brimley is a private road, 50 feet wide. We made the easement as wide as the road.
Okay.
So you've got, and the plan shows, if you look at Brimley, there, there are 25 parallel parking spaces showing up, they'll be striped. So just doing the math, the parking spaces are 22 by 10, so that leaves you 30 feet in the middle, 15-foot travel lanes. And then, as a part of the, the GDP and the nursing home, we're picking up four additional spaces above and beyond what would be required. So there's 29, and then on parcel one, where the existing AL building is at, we're going to add 11 spaces, there's a place to add 11 spaces to that. So that's the 40 spaces that, that we make up. The 11 spaces do not show up on this GDP, but it's something-
We think that's something that I would like to see, though, is where they are and how they will be accessed.
And then the other question that I think Mr. Randall was really getting at is the parking ordinance is number three on our agenda, which is unfortunately after this. And there are, you know, projected changes to the parking ordinance, so we want to know how those changes will relate to this particular facility, so we really want to get through parking ordinance, you know, figuring that out.
Yeah, absolutely correct, because it, this is parked based, basically, based on the, the new regs.
Oh, it is.
Because we would, it, the, the regs right now classify this as a hospital, and it's three spaces per bed. I mean, you're starting to talk over 200, 300 parking spaces, which, it just doesn't work.
So you actually like what we're doing, then?
Absolutely. That's a, it's a good thing.
Can you say that louder?
Yes.
We don't get told that very often.
Right. If I could continue just for a second. So how many, how many current parking spaces do you have on the site currently? Do you know?
There's 75.
There's 75, and 40, 44 of them are in parcel two B, correct?
Yes.
And those are part of the required amount that you need for what's currently located, the AL facility on, on parcel two?
Correct.
Okay, so 40 of those will need to be required just for parcel two, and then we'll need to build an entirely new set of parking spaces for parcel two B.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay, so how many, by the parking ordinance, how many spaces would we need to build for parcel two B?
By the court, currently, be three, there's not, 270.
Okay, so you need 270 spaces.
That's, that's too much, that's under the old ordinance.
That's under the one minutes right now, because it classifies it as a hospital.
So based on the new one?
I thought it was three space.
On the current one, it's what?
The court, current ordinance is .25 parking spaces per bed, or one space per every four beds.
All right, I think we need to wrap it up, wrap up the discussion.
That's two strikes, I guess.
No, I think, well, it's, we're good, we're good. Mr. Randall.
And my, to my point, this is why I think this is, this is somewhat confusing, because we have a current ordinance, we're working on an amendment to that ordinance, but it's important that we know that parcel one or parcel two has their set of parking restricted, parking requirements, and they're independent of what we're going to do for two B. So the parallel parking spaces that you're talking about, I understood to be part of the two B requirement. So if that's the case, where am I going to put the 40 spaces?
Okay, okay, hold on, hold on.
So-
We've got, this is how confusing it is, this is why it has to get deferred, in my opinion. Because obviously, there's a lot of communication, we're going to be here all night trying to figure this out. So I think what would be helpful, if we put those comments that you have, maybe in writing, we can send them over to Mr. Payne, and we can hash this out before the 26th. It's only two weeks away, I don't think the board would be able to take action on it anyway, between now and then, so we're just deferring it two weeks. It gives us an opportunity to answer these questions, so do you guys want to go ahead and take a vote?
Madam Chair.
Any more discussion? Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Patel.
So I think what would be helpful, either if the applicant does it, or staff does it, or they confer, what the parking requirements would be, just kind of a side-by-side, parking requirements under existing regulations and parking that would be required if we were to amend the parking regulations in the way that Mr. Payne has recommended. We may not get there, but it would help advise and inform us what that number range might be and how it would relate to this parcel. Does that make sense?
And where the additional spaces will be, I'd like to see a drawing for that. Okay.
We will highlight it, make it stand out.
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
Okay, you guys want to go ahead and vote?
Yep.
For deferral till September 26th? I think he might have fallen asleep back there. Okay. Just use Steven.
I pressed it.
Just waiting on, all right, seven, all right, so the motion carries 7-0. All right, moving on. Item number two on the agenda, proposed ordinance 01830, which will amend two different road names, and this is going to be presented by Ms. Hornung.
This is not shattering stuff. Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. We have the index of official road names and its proposed ordinance, oh, zero, oh, 18-30, and it would amend two private easements in the county, one off of Courthouse Road, and one easement off of Wide Water Road. And the reason for this is that through public safety, found out that there are these easements that are serving more than two structures, and according to our address ordinance, any easement or driveway or road that serves more than two structures should be named in order to help with addressing and, and emergency 911 facilities. So the first one is the easement off of Courthouse Road. Could I have the computer, please?
Ms. Hornung, really quickly, before you get into the details on these, since it's just one ordinance number, are these going to be voted on together, or will they be independent?
They can be voted on together.
Can they be voted on independently?
Yeah, you can vote on it independently, they'll be in the same ordinance.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So on June 5th, the Community Economic Development Committee met, and I explained to them the situation with these easements. The map that you see shows- The map that you see shows, the map that you see, there's Courthouse Road to the north, and then there's this easement that bisects quite a few properties in red. And this square at the top is actually Stormwater Pond for VDOT, for the right-of-way. But you have a number of parcels. This one is vacant, as is, this one is owned by the county, and this is owned by the school. And then you have houses here, and here, and here. So you actually have three houses that are being served by this easement. So by the ordinance, we have to name this road. And the Community Economic Development Committee looked at this, and when we sent out the letters in January to all the affected property owners along that easement, we asked for recommendations for street names to give us the top three. And because this is family that lives along this road, the people who responded recommended Pierce Bailey with a different suffix, but it was chosen to name it as Pierce Bailey Place. And so this road would be named Pierce Bailey Place, and there was no conflict or question over why the name was chosen. It was because it was the family who lived off that road.
If I could ask a question? None of the landowners' names had Bailey in it. So I'm wondering, who is Pierce Bailey?
It could have been the original. They were saying that the Pierce Bailey was the family name, so the people who are there now possibly heirs to the name or related.
All right.
So that was the reason for.
And there's no historical significance to that name?
No, there was nothing that was, no, it was a family name. I presume it may have been a family subdivision that happened a long time ago. And what we're doing now to avoid any of this is that whenever any land is subdivided, we are working with GIS that they will address the lots if there's a structure, and we also name the roads if it's going to be more than two lots, just for future, so that there's no question of naming the road after the houses are built and the addresses are assigned. May I have the, oh, I can do this. I was looking for the... I wanted to forward the...
I did.
Oh, you did. Oh, I'm sorry. Just, I've been looking at them so much, they look the same. The second one, also, we took this to the CD, the Community Economic Development Committee on June 5th, and this is an easement that bisects several properties. You have, these properties are served by this easement. The ones that are circled, they have addresses off this easement, well, off of Wide Water Road, but because the easement is serving more than two structures, this easement has to be named. And like the other one, this was also brought to our attention in January, we sent the letter to everybody whose property is along this easement, regardless if they access it, because of the easement being partially on the properties, and to name that easement because of having more than two structures. And for this situation, the recommendation for this, we had a number of recommendations for road names. There was Reed Road, which is not acceptable, because we already have that in the county. There was Farmhouse Lane, and Reed Road, Reed Lane, Palmer Hayden, Farmhouse, Trail Lane, and Military Way. But several of those were very similar to roads already named, or we have a Reed, R-E-E-D, and R-E-I-D wouldn't be acceptable. So the name that was chosen is Tank Creek Way. The reason for that is because there is a Tank Creek that bisects this property from the Marine Corps Base. So that is actually to the... No, it's to the right of this parcel, back here.
All right.
Because this is a, this 2295 is a huge parcel, and I wanted to focus mainly on the easement, but it bisects this large parcel with Marine Corps Base, so it separates it. So that was an acceptable name, Tank Creek Way. And aside from the ones that were recommended, we took the top three and relayed that to the Board of Supervisors Committee. And we also had this owner back here, her daughter was at the meeting and also reiterated the information to why that name was chosen, and everybody was in agreement. So there was no conflict over choosing that name. So before you are these two names for these two easements. Courthouse Road being named as Pierce Bailey Place, and the easement off Wide Water Road to be named as Tank Creek Way. And for Courthouse Road, I did make sure you were provided with an email from Mr. Climalge. He did not mind what the name of the road was. He did have an issue with the location of the driveway, but that is a private issue. So that's not something the county would necessarily work with on an enforcement issue, because that is a private easement and it bisects properties. And whatever the information is on the deed would have to be between the owners and what they were agreed to and how is it recorded.
Any difference?
No.
The Courthouse Road one? Okay.
No, because the easements are, I'm sorry?
It's because the road is...
Right, right. And it's existing. These access easements have been in existence for quite a few years. The addresses along Wide Water, off the easement off of Wide Water Road, were created back in 97. And similar to the easement off of Courthouse Road, those were, those addresses were created in '07.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Could we go back to the first map, please? So the easement doesn't run up along that property line all the way to Courthouse? It cuts through that VDOT, Stormwater? That's where the easement goes? Or the easement runs, as he states, right up along the property line to Courthouse Road?
Well, according to the aerial, it appears to work this way as it's...
I can't see what you're writing.
Oh. Let me get another color.
Please.
The easement runs, according to the aerial...
The road. The road, existing road runs that way?
The existing...
Driveway.
Private way, correct. To these properties.
I think what the letter was is that, is it an easement because of the road, or is it a road because of the easement? That he's stating that the easement goes up along the property line, doesn't cross...
He's saying the driveway wasn't in the location that they agreed to. And so that is...
Which is interesting, that the easement would make that right turn and not just go straight up to Courthouse. Okay. Thank you.
Just a general question. Would the private property owners be responsible for putting up the road sign?
No, that would be the county.
So if this easement issue and location of the driveway should change, does the county have to go back out and move the sign?
We probably would. We'd have to be notified of that.
Okay.
Unless whoever's moving it would decide to move the sign.
Has nothing to do with voting on the road names, because I was just curious.
Depends if they like the name, maybe they'll just take it down.
Then they'll notify the county, and then we'll work to repurchase another sign to be put on that road.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Is this, the county is the applicant on these, technically, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. No questions for staff? Then we'll go ahead and move to the public hearing. So if you're here this evening to talk on this issue, you'd like to come down to the podium, you can speak for three minutes when the yellow light comes on. You have one minute left when the red light comes on. Please wrap up your comments, and please state your name, address, and the district you reside when you come on down to the podium. Mr. Wodowski, come on down. Do you not sit up front, because you don't want to be on camera?
Someone left their glasses. What's that?
I said, do you not sit up front, because you don't want to be on camera?
I've been on camera so many times, it doesn't matter. Paul Wodowski, Eight Pickett Lane, Cherry Mandur, Rock Hill District. All right, I'm a historical buff about names. And I like the Tank Creek Way one, because the USMC, in honor of my dad, that'd be really good, that we need a tank there. I think that's a good thing. But I'm not too fond of family names. I believe this county has a lot of history, and I just don't like that a group of people get to sit around, and now it's 11 years later, and they decide, oh, I'm going to name it Pierce Bailey Place. Well, it's just not right in my mind. Now, a thing you need to consider when you name any road is you need to also give it a number. If you make it a secondary state road, guess what? VDOT has to take care of it. That means VDOT's got to put the sign up. VDOT's got to sand it. VDOT's got to do snow removal. Then it's not a county burden. Not even considered, huh? I guess the county was the applicant, so what can I say? One more comment about this stuff, about several of these were not available to duplication. Well, it didn't really apply to White Water, but Franklin Pierce, he was one of our presidents. He wasn't from a Commonwealth, thank goodness. So maybe we should name it Franklin Pierce Bailey Place. You know, I got to give you some suggestions, you know? You're not, I don't have my Parallelogram shirt on today. I wore it yesterday to the school board to welcome the superintendent. But one other comment I'll have, and that is about GIS. You know, I just got a $10 GIS of my neighborhood. I have one before 2005, when the property was built, and now I have one in 2018, and I have one in between. I think you can solve a lot of problems, especially the last public hearing, if you go use GIS. It's there, it's a 21st century tool, it'll give you the visual of what you need. And you need to go back and see, especially the last public hearing, what did that land look like? Don't take letters, use GIS.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come down and speak? Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the planning commission. Anybody have any questions for staff? This one? Mr. Appicello?
Just if staff can respond to the comment about who's going to be responsible for the road.
I know the answer to this one.
I know, but just to get it into the record.
The road is a private easement, and it will be maintained by the property owners. And if that was ever to want to come into the state system for VDOT, there would have to be a plan in place to show construction of that road, and then they would have to dedicate the road so it had 50-foot of right-of-way.
And also bring it to VDOT standards.
And it would, right. Doing the plan and dedicating it and bringing it up to VDOT standards, having the inspections. And once VDOT would accept it, they would assign a route number to it. But because this easement is a small easement bisecting properties, I don't foresee that that's going to happen unless the owners come together and develop plans and put forth that information and submit it to the county for review.
And if memory serves me correctly, VDOT standards is culverts under every driveway, the ditches dug by the road, 50-foot of right-of-way and 25-foot paved, of like, I think, like three inches of blacktop or something, to VDOT blacktop standards.
It sounds familiar, because my brother works for VDOT, but I don't know the exact details.
Okay, thanks.
If I can ask or say one other thing. I'm with Mr. Wodowski on the historical names. I wish we had that in our naming guidelines, that that would be something that we could at least recommend to property owners. It's not one of the provisions in the current process for renaming streets. It's on attachment three, page one of two. But it does say family surnames may be used as road names. Is that correct?
That is correct, and staff is working toward amending the address ordinance in the future.
To do?
To make it a policy and have the ordinance go straight to the board if there's any questions for naming the road. Because right now, it's in the zoning ordinance, and appeals are set to go to the county administrator, which is in conflict with the process for appeals on the zoning ordinance that go straight to the zoning administrator. So there's some things that staff is working, is going to start working with the county attorney to get this address ordinance in a form, so that it's easier to administer than have been in the past. And it takes less time if they need to change road names, so that the applicants, the owners or even the county, doesn't have to go through so many meetings and public hearings in order to get this changed.
So would that mean that we would be out of the process, the planning commission? Is that what you're saying?
If it becomes a county code chapter, that is correct.
Well, in any event, I still think that part of the process ought to be, I know this is a little off-topic, considering historical names, first researching it, maybe consulting with the historical commission as one option for naming a particular road. Thanks.
Thank you.
I had one thing that just popped in my mind. Is there a Bailey Place in the county that could cause confusion or a Bailey Lane?
No, we, when we were looking at the names, we do a wild character search and take both parts of the name or syllables of the name to make sure there is not a Bailey something or a Pierce something. So it's, we already checked our address database, that there'd be no confusion. And of course, in all of this, we're working with GIS, our fire marshal, and, yeah, fire marshal and GIS, and then county staff, to make sure that when we're naming these roads, we're not duplicating anything. Because we do have somebody in GIS who's working with public safety, and he brings certain things to our attention if we need to name roads.
All right.
And which, these two were part of it, that come to find out there are three or more structures on that easement, so we need to name it.
Okay. That's good. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Bring it back to the commission. Mr. English, Mr. Boswell, this is in your two districts. If you guys have any...
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to approve ordinance 018-30, as is.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. English, a second by Commissioner Boswell. Any comments, Commissioner English?
No.
Boswell? Any discussion? All right. We can vote. Motion is to approve the road names for both Wide Water and Hartwood districts. All right, motion carries 6-0 with Mr. McPherson being absent. Okay, moving on. Item number three on the agenda, Ms. Hornung, I guess you get to stay up here for the proposed off-street parking ordinance.
This, ma'am. Well, you've seen this a little, a few times. This is the amendment to the parking ordinance, code section 28102 for off-street parking, table 7.1 for required parking spaces, and then to also repeal table 7.3, the required loading spaces. Because what staff did is, we combined the parking and loading space requirements into one table for less confusion and easier to figure out what the requirements were. The board had created a committee, and then the planning commission had a sub... The board had created a committee, and then the planning commission had a subcommittee. We've been working on this since about April 2017. There are a number of things to look at, size of parking spaces, drive aisle widths, location of required parking, number of parking and loading spaces by type of use, regulations for drive-through facilities, uses for the spaces, ingress egress for parking and loading, commercial vehicle parking, shared parking, parking credits, handicap parking and access, clear-sight triangles, right-of-way protection, and restricted access entrances. Also, through going to the Community Development Economic, Community Economic Development Committee, after the planning commission forwarded the recommendation to the changes in the parking ordinance, Supervisor Shelton recommended changing the parking spaces for hotel and motels back to one space per room because the, well, the current has it as one space per rental unit. And then the committee recommended one space per two beds. So that was changed to go back to one space per room. Also Supervisor Cohen recommended increasing the parking space size to nine feet by 20 feet because the typical size is eight and a half by 18. And our ordinance doesn't require anything more than that. The minimum is eight and a half by 18. If they choose to do larger parking spaces, that's allowed. Also, there was an audit of the Stormwater and Environmental Chesapeake Bay Act program, and the Virginia DEQ made some recommendations that in order to minimize impervia, minimize impervious surface to areas in the county, some ways to establish that or assist with that would be either putting a cap on parking spaces or changing the sizes of parking spaces so that you have less impervious surface. Some of the recommendations that actually came up for that were we could, we could reduce or change the parking space sizes and incorporate eight and a half by 18 feet, maybe for a standard, eight by 15 feet for a compact, or nine by 20 feet for an oversized space. Currently, the parking spaces aren't, there isn't a requirement for any particular size. Then there was also another option that if you maximize parking spaces, that has been talked about, but there has not been any actual work on trying to develop a maximum parking space for each use. What the parking table, the new parking table that you have before you incorporated a lot of the B1 and B2 uses, because in the older parking, the existing parking table, we didn't have a lot of uses listed. So we tried to be very comprehensive so that every use that there is in the B1, B2, B3, they're all listed so that when somebody is preparing a development plan, it's a little bit easier to figure out what the calculation will be for the parking size. Another item in order to address that information from the DEQ requirement audit would be maybe to have pervious pavers. If we were to do that, we would have to have a, an ordinance amendment in our ordinance to allow that. Because right now, there isn't anything specifically referred to that you can use pervious pavement when you're creating a parking lot or parking spaces. There were some other, we've had some other things come up at the same time. Mr. Payne had written a letter regarding the parking spaces for hospital and nursing homes. And currently, the parking space for hospital and nursing homes are one space per two beds plus one space per employee of the largest shift. And the revision changes it to have two spaces per bed instead of one space per two beds. So we basically double that space, but it's still one space per employee on the largest shift. So he was recommending that you do one space per two beds and to also separate out hospital and nursing home. Staff has discussed that and looked at it, that while we have a listed calculation for assisted living, right now it's one per four beds, which doesn't seem appropriate. So staff was looking at to divide those up, which assisted living is already on its own, but have hospital as one per two bed plus an employee from the largest shift. The nursing home would be one per two beds plus the employee on the largest shift, and then we would do the assisted living the same as the nursing home. So assisted living and nursing home would be one space per two bed plus one per employee on the largest shift. Those are some of the things that staff was looking at, that that might be a better recommendation. We didn't change anything, but that's something to think about. As far as any of the other changes in the ordinance, there's been no comments necessarily from anybody. We sent that to the, the old ordinance, and the possible recommendations were sent to the development community, some of the professionals, and we already incorporated any of those changes with the committee. So I think right now, the new ordinance that shows the parking spaces per, you know, gross floor area with a loading space, the only one that's come into question were the numbers for the assisted living facility, hospital, and nursing home, to quantify those separately, which assisted living is already separate.
Can you, again, those are listed, I think, in attachment one, starting on page seven of 12. Could we just go back through those and go through the respective use and the numbers that you all were thinking of? I think assisted living is on page eight, about the middle of the page.
Right. Currently assisted living is one space per four beds.
Okay.
That's it.
So you weren't thinking about changing that one?
No, that was left the same in the new ordinance, one space per four beds.
Right, so now that you have another chance to take a look at it, there's no, you still think that's appropriate?
Staff was looking at it and thought that might be more in line with the nursing home and make it one per two bed plus one space per employee on the largest shift.
Okay, so one per two bed plus one space per employee, largest shift. Okay, what's the next one you guys were thinking of?
And then the hospital, currently, currently the, the hospital is, oops. Currently, the hospital is one space per two beds. It's actually hospital, nursing home, and similar uses. And that's listed currently as one space per two beds plus one per employee of the largest shift.
Yeah, I'm looking at it on page nine, it says two per bed.
Two per bed, yeah.
Plus one per employee of the largest shift.
That's the new one.
Yeah, right, that's what I'm talking about. I want to go through the, I want to go through the changed version to see if we were going to adopt that.
Oh, I see.
Based on the additional changes you all were thinking of.
Right, so the ordinance before you to change it from hospital, nursing home, and similar uses, it's listed as two per bed plus one per employee on the largest shift. But the recommendation would be to separate those out and have hospitals separately and make nursing home and assisted living the same. So the hospital will remain as it's written here on page nine, two per bed plus one per employee of the largest shift. And then the assisted living and nursing home would actually be one per two bed plus one employee on the largest shift. So you basically have more spaces for the hospital because of typically short-term care and more traffic in a shorter time than you would for assisted living and nursing home. So the parking is reduced per bed.
So on, where it says nursing homes and similar uses, the similar uses are associated with nursing homes, not with hospitals?
Correct.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, what would be a similar use?
Assisted living, which is already called out, and if there was anything else. We have independent living. Independent living is in there. I think that was at one time a catch-all, just in case a use was associated with a nursing home, but it was not listed. But since then, we have listed assisted living separately, independent living separately, nursing home separately.
So would it be appropriate to strike that portion of the phrase? I mean, if somebody comes up with a new use...
Zoning administrator may have some additional information.
Good evening. Mr. Bain, yes, we could strike similar uses, but in my zoning world, I don't like to eliminate possibilities of uses that it may change with the state code. We have various things that you could actually have group homes, that you are allowed to have some people being cared for. So it would include things like that, and many times the state codes can change as far as the types of facilities that are allowed to care for individuals. So it would help allow for some of that.
Okay. So again, somebody looking at zoning ordinance, how would they know what similar uses are?
They would have to ask me.
There wouldn't be a footnote for that? We wouldn't have a footnote in case you're not here for that?
Was there any other change that you guys were thinking of?
What about the one that was in, for hospitals, right? We already covered that.
Right, to separate hospital and nursing home.
No, hotels is what I meant to say.
The hotels was already done from the last time.
That's right, we did that one.
We fixed that and made those changes. So it's one per room, one space per room. And that's hotels and motels.
Again, and I think we talked about this before, how do you deal with a hotel that has a conference center? Is that covered separately so that there would be additional parking for the conference center portion?
I believe so. The uses are, yes.
Yes, Commissioner Bain, on page seven at the bottom, there's a conference facility, parking rated one space per 4.5 persons, based on maximum occupancy for that space.
Okay. And what I'm getting at is, it would be two separate computations, and then the parking required would be the sum of both?
Correct.
Okay.
We have several developments that we look at it that way, if it's office or whatever the business is. Several, frequently, we do calculations for several uses on the same development.
All right.
Do we want to do anything with the size of the spaces?
I would go with Supervisor Cohen's request on that.
What page is that on?
It's going to be on your, in your notes.
Page three of five of the staff report?
Yeah, three of five.
At the bottom?
On the amendment, it's on page two of 12.
Two, 12.
Subsection one of, section 28102, changes the size of parking spaces to nine by 20.
It's already in there.
And Mr. Harvey, when we spoke about this on the Parking and Drive Isle Committee, you said most developers, when they come in, they build spaces at nine-foot width anyway, approximately versus the eight and a half. I feel like you told me that, but I might have made it up.
Well, when we looked at the comparative jurisdictions, it was sort of half and half. Some were nine by 20, some were eight and a half by 18. Some developers do the nine by 20s just as a general rule because Supervisor Cohen had talked about it when he was a member of the planning commission, is that people that want to accommodate customers and welcome them, they prefer to have larger spaces because if they drive a large vehicle, it's much more convenient compared to the narrower spaces.
Okay. So, yeah. My car's always getting dinged up.
I support the larger spaces, and just in terms of general discussion, I'm totally opposed to mixed space sizes, allowing for compact cars, et cetera. Because my experience is that at the time of year, when all of the spaces are needed, nobody pays attention to the space sizes, and you'll get a Cadillac SUV in a compact-sized space and taking up two spaces. So if that was ever considered, I would definitely vote against it.
You need to say your Cadillac.
Yeah. Why are you guys picking on SUVs?
Madam Chairman and Commissioner Bain, that provision currently is in that subsection one, but it deals with any parking spaces in excess of the minimum number required. May be, allowed to be compact spaces, which are eight by 15. So that's a current ordinance language.
I'm not happy with it.
Go on record anyway.
Are you going to ask this question about public hearing notice? Because if we're, this is a public hearing, are we going to violate notice because we're going more restrictive? Is that more restrictive? Is that not more restrictive?
I believe the public hearing notice for this particular consideration was pretty broad because there were so many changes. So I don't feel like we're probably going outside of it. But if there are specific considerations, we would have to look into the ad and then get back with you.
Okay.
So, in line with Mr. Bain's thinking, Al won, I think, is on his license plate. If we were to strike out the last sentence of 28102-1, would that cause some concern for us to have to re-advertise? So I'm going to be more specific. So again, right now, it says any spaces beyond the minimum required. So if you were required to have 100, and you had 120, those 20 spaces currently could be compact car spaces. If we struck that at all spaces, regardless of whether they're the minimum or above, would have to be the nine feet by 20. Yeah, nine by 20, is that going to be an issue? Is that kind of what, where you were at?
That's what I was wondering then.
I need to look into the advertisement, I will see if I have access to it, but if not, then I can't answer that question at this time. If you give me a few minutes to look into the ad and you can continue on.
Yeah, we'll keep discussing while you look into it, because I think we have to vote on it tonight. Okay.
The other, the other comment generally I'll make, since you mentioned pervious paving, my history with pervious paving as an engineer is that porous pavement does not work well after about two years. Paving blocks, on the other hand, can be very successful. So I would, if that's ever considered, I would recommend specifying paving blocks and not porous pavement until they come up with a better design.
Mr. Appicello?
Sorry, just where were you thinking that would be? Is that in response to VEDQs?
It was just something commented, because the Chesapeake Bay program suggested that that be considered for offsetting the level of impervious cover. But it's not in the ordinance, no.
I guess, just kind of stepping back, based on the staff's comments and the discussion we've had previously, I just don't think we're ready to address VEDQ's comments. And I kind of agree with the recommendation that if we were to go forward with it, it would be another shot at making changes to the ordinance. So it's not, I don't think that piece of it is ready for primetime.
I'm fine with that.
So Mr. Appicello, the only change would be to 28102 is striking that So, Mr. Appicello, the only change would be to 28-102 is striking that last sentence. Any parking spaces exceeding the number of required spaces may be designated as compact car spaces with a minimum width of eight feet and a minimum length of 15 feet.
If our attorney says it's permissible to strike that, based on that advertisement?
But there's no direction to look into any other additional ordinance amendments to allow paving blocks? Okay.
Do we want to go ahead and hold the public hearing part? Okay, while Rashida looks this up. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so, no more questions for staff. So, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on this. So, if you'd like to come down to the podium and speak, please state your name, address, and the district that you reside. And you have three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute left. When the red light comes on, if you'd wrap up your comments. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Everett Lovell. I live at 3071 Jefferson Davis Highway. I opened on the Acquahia Pines RV Park in a suburban hotel. I'm very happy you rechange the parking for hotels back to one per room and not one per bed, because one per bed just wouldn't have worked at all. My main questions tonight concern maximum parking size, which I heard addressed. I also didn't hear, how many vehicles are you allowed to put in a parking spot? I have some parking vehicles that are 40-foot long by eight and a half feet wide, and they're towing maybe a 25-foot travel trailer, and that's on one parking spot. So, I'm very concerned if you're going to start specifying how many vehicles go on a spot or what the maximum spot is. I'm also concerned, because I don't see anything about loading docks or loading spots with a suburban hotel when we were construct, excuse me, when we were constructing that, that was a big issue. Initially, we had to have five loading spots, and I think eventually, it was reduced down to two 12-by-25-foot loading spots. So, I'm a little concerned about delivery vehicles, and I didn't see that addressed in here. And also, in the campground, we get bicycles and we get motorcycles. So, that's sort of on the minimum side, you know, the smallest vehicle. So, if you're considering compact, that's incredibly compact, but I'm not sure if you want to specify that as well. Hopefully, you can clarify a bit.
Thank you, Mr. Lovell.
Yes, ma'am.
No, I said, thank you, Mr. Lovell.
Oh, thank you.
Would anyone else like to come down? Mr. Wodowski? Your last opportunity.
Tonight.
Did you like that opportunity?
I'm going to die, so, tonight.
For tonight, not ever.
Simon and Listen have the same letters in them. Paul Waldowski, Eight Picket Lane, Jerry Mandar, Rock Hill District. I got a lot of notes here, but the first thing you need to do is defer this until Florence finishes, because, you know, my mom's on her way, and you're all going to see one of the, we're in that circle of flash floods. And guess where it's going to hit? Parking lots, because we keep on paving stuff over. I really like the engineering comment. I think that needs to be put in the ordinance. I think we need to get these developers to look at paving blocks. Once again, we got lawyers who are contacting our staff with letters and telling us about hospitals and nursing homes, and you need to educate them and send them your comments, and so he knows the sizes of parking spaces and standards for driving. What concerns me most with parking is places like Vista Woods that don't belong with HOAs, you know, the Houses of Aristocrats. Those are working people. They're on state roads. They have a hard time parking, especially when they have graduations, different types of events. Just some common sense aspects, but we all know the Commonwealth, common sense is not common in a Commonwealth. Now, Mr. Cohen, you know, great planning commissioner, but he's a selected supervisor. He's not an elected one. Hardcoding anything, any space, any time. You know, I worked for the Senate for 15 years and five months, and I had to fill out the Ethics Committee, because some idiot hardcoded a salary. And just because I fit in that salary, I had to keep doing it for hardcoding. It was geared for people who were above me. So, be careful when you hardcode anything, because the only change that matters is the change in people's pockets. That's the numbers that you really want to work on, not on hardcoding ordinances so people can't deal with it. Now, one more comment about assisted living, because I just went through this ordeal. Assisted living people usually don't have a vehicle. If they go somewhere, it's a relative, it's an Uber, it's in a community van, you know, wake up, it's the 21st century. I mean, I went through this for four years. So, same thing I'll mention to you about Medicaid. Be careful, Medicaid doesn't pay everything.
Thank you.
Verna Long, 2451 Harpoon Drive, and this is my first time, I'm in the Acquahia Harbor District, and you're parking, so I had to talk.
Can you pull the mic down a little bit closer to you? We can hear you better. There you go.
Verna Long, 2451 Harpoon Drive, in Acquahia Harbor, and I had to talk on parking. If you've got a bus, you can eliminate a little bit more parking. But when you talk about employees parking at a hospital or nursing home, ever been, tried to go there at change of shift? There is no parking space. So, us third shifters always had to park on the side of the road and then have to find a way to go move your parking, your car. Same way with hotels. When you're traveling and you get there late at night, all of those campers and motorcycles have taken up every parking space. So, keeping it within a range that people can find a parking space. And the paver, sir, we need the pavers to stop the water buildup on the, you go to a parking lot, and you've got to wade through the water to get to the store, and I would really look at that watershed at the nursing home, because some of these watersheds are really good, and they've done a really good job, but some of them have filled in and need to be cleaned out. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the Planning Commission. Does anybody have additional questions for staff? I know I do.
So, just in response to Mr. Lovell's comments and concerns, I don't know how those would be impacted by these changes, because when I look at 102-1, irrespective of taking out that last sentence, we're just changing the width of parking spaces. It wouldn't necessarily deal with what vehicles can park in those spaces. We don't, I don't think we even addressed that.
Right, no, it would just, it's all on future development also. Anything existing, unless they come in with a change, redevelopment, or new development, they would be subject to these parking standards. Also, at the beginning of Table 7.1, what staff did, there were, or there exists in the current ordinance, two different loading space sizes for certain uses. And what we did was, we combined it and said that predominantly, most of them are just one loading space, a minimum of 12-by-25 feet. If they choose to build a larger loading space, depending on what their use is, they can do that. But we have a minimum of one, for most of them, a minimum of one loading space. Of course, the residential are zero, and some of the larger, more intensive uses have two loading spaces as a requirement in this new ordinance.
And that was, just to interject one comment, when we did the stakeholder input comments, we got a lot of comments that we, as a county, were requiring way too many loading spaces. And I think Mr. Lovell mentioned he had five in the beginning, and now I looked up the new ordinance, it would only be one that is required. So, we definitely made a lot of changes on loading spaces.
Yes, because certain uses didn't necessarily require a large number of loading spaces, because maybe they were smaller, but they still came under industrial, commercial, the different intensity of uses. So, that's why we went through and added each individual use, so that the parking requirement is tied to that use instead of a general descriptor.
Right, and again, just to flesh out a little bit further, so, whether it was an eight by 18, eight and a half by 18, or nine by 20, if somebody parked an RV in that spot, that's not an issue with respect to this specific ordinance?
Correct.
Okay. Was there anything else that he mentioned that?
It was the loading, and then who parks in, or what type of vehicle parks in a space.
And we took, we're hoping to take that out, the compact versus large, that part.
Right. So, it's just, all spaces are a minimum nine by 20.
Okay.
Regardless.
And back to the paver issue, I mean, again, it's a, you know, a good thought. I just don't see how we address it at this point, under this ordinance where we are now.
We need a new ordinance, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay.
Ms. McClendon, can we go ahead and make the change, and we'll go ahead with that, after you look at that?
Madam Chairman, I believe that would be a permissible change pursuant to the advertisement for this public hearing.
Okay. Do we need to review the nursing home stuff one more time? Are we good on that? If somebody's going to make a motion with the numbers that we're changing into?
I think I captured it. If you want me to walk through it.
I think. Are we ready to, thank you, Ms. Hornung. I think we're ready for a motion, if the commission so chooses.
I will make a motion to approve the amended zoning ordinance number 01, 018-02.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner English to amend, to approve the amended, but I'm going to let you second it, maybe with the additions, or at least give him the additions.
Well, can I offer a friendly amendment? I don't know if that's appropriate before I second or after I second.
It has to be seconded, right?
I would recommend you make the motion with the corrected amendments in it.
Any chance you'd be willing to withdraw your motion?
Well, I can, well, nobody seconded, so it's not going to be seconded.
Would you be willing to withdraw it, and let me?
Yeah, it's lack of, didn't second, so go ahead.
Yeah, withdraw.
Madam Chairman, I move to recommend approval of the draft parking and drive aisle standards with the following changes. On Attachment 1, page 2 of 12, section 28-102-1, striking out the last sentence in its entirety. On page 8 of 12, under assisted living, change the numbers as follows. One per two beds plus one space per employee, based on the largest shift. On page 9 of 12, removing nursing homes and similar uses from the hospital use, and adding as a separate use, nursing homes and assisted living facilities.
And similar uses.
And similar uses. I thought we were, okay. My fault. One space per two beds plus one space per employee of the largest shift. That's it, Madam Chairman?
Thank you. Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, so, motion by Commissioner Appicello with all the amended changes. I'm not going to repeat them. Second by Commissioner English. Any discussion, Commissioner Appicello?
Madam Chairman, a lot of time has been spent on this.
A lot of time.
I appreciate the work of the Subcommittee and staff. I think it's a well-needed adjustment to our parking standards. I think it'll be easier on the folks who are impacted by these changes, and in my view, in many cases, reduce the number of spaces where they might be otherwise unnecessary. And I also appreciate the change of the space size from eight and a half to 18, to nine, to 20, because I know there's a lot of big vehicles in Stafford County that, where those vehicles can conflict in a smaller space. So, again, kudos to everybody involved, and I think it's a worthwhile change to move forward to the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. Mr. English?
No question.
Any further discussion? All right, let's vote. Motion carries 6-0 with Mr. McPherson absent. Okay, so, this evening, we don't have any unfinished business. If we move on to item number four, which is new business, we have a waiver of subdivision ordinance, section 22-143, regarding the lot, shape of a lot, where we recognize Ms. Eva Campbell this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and fellow planning commissioners. I'm here to present item four, a waiver from the subdivision ordinance 22143A regarding shape and elongation. The site is located on Assessors Parcels 55C14 and 55C120B with a combined acreage of about 1.8. It's zoned A2 in the George Washington Election District. It's located in the Bell Oak subdivision on the north side of White Oak Road and east of Bell Plains Road. Here is a location map showing the subject parcels located in the red hashing. And here is an aerial view of the two parcels, with the star on the intersecting line of the two. The applicant and owner, Jose Rivera Surpas, is seeking a consolidation of the two parcels, 55C14 and 55C120B, but by doing this, he puts the new consolidated lot in nonconformance with section 22143A of the subdivision ordinance that states the depth of a lot shall not exceed five times its width, which we measure at the front building line. Parcel 55C14 contains a house with a failing drain field, as confirmed with the Virginia Department of Health. The applicant and owner of both parcels is pursuing a new drain field location on tax map parcel 55C120B, as there is no suitable location on 55C14. I discussed the new location with the soil scientist, Mr. Ruben Lakin, from Fall Line Soils, who has found a viable location on parcel 55C120B, but has not applied for a permit, as the health department informed them that they could not receive a permit for the new location until the consolidation is approved. The subdivision ordinance does not allow off-site drain fields. Section 221184E states that lots served by non-community onsite sewage disposal system shall have a disposal site located on the lot in which they serve. Consolidating the two parcels would also bring the parcel with the house on it in conformance with the zoning ordinance minimum acreage requirement of one acre per lot in the A2 zoning district. This is the copy of the plat submitted for the consolidation of the two parcels. The parcel with front end on White Oak with the house has the current failing drain field, and the parcel to the back has a new proposed drain field around here, which I'm going to show in the next slide. It's hand-drawn by the soil scientist that went out there and checked for the perk. So, the applicant formally requests that the Stafford County Planning Commission consider the waiver request from 22143A, shape and elongation. Approving this waiver would only impact the current property owner of the two parcels in question, and I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions? Commissioner Bain?
Not a question, just a comment. I did discuss this with the engineer for the applicant. The applicant, when he purchased the property, was not aware of the problem with the existing drain septic system, and has tried in earnest to resolve it without needing to do this waiver. But as you mentioned, there's just no place on the existing site for a new drain field. The ordinance concerning the width versus depth of the lot, a comment I'll make is that if you, if you can go back to the lot, the drawing that showed the lot boundaries, I think it was your very first drawing.
That showed the lot boundaries? This is the plat?
No, keep on going back.
Okay.
The one, but there you go. If you look at that drawing, there are three, four, five, six parcels- If you look at that drawing, there are three, four, five, six parcels that are landlocked there, the one that's hatched is one of the six. I asked Mr. Harvey how that happened, there are no easements for those lots, and it had something to do with an early subdivision of this area, and in my mind, things got really messed up with it, so applying or enforcing the current ordinance and saying that you can't have it this long, since it's only this wide, really wouldn't be applicable. We're trying, in a way, to correct some errors of past subdivision layouts, so just a couple of comments.
Madam Chairman, I have a comment to add as well, the way I understand it, in the absence of our approval of this waiver, the applicant would not otherwise be able to use their property.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank goodness he has that lot behind him. I don't know what he would do if he didn't. Any other comments, questions? Okay, and the applicant is not here to speak on this, okay. All right, well, no questions, no more comments, Mr. Bain, this is in your district, what would you like to do? No, it's not under public hearing, yeah, it's just new business.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to grant this waiver from ordinance section twenty-two dash one forty-three A, and the waiver request number is WA one one eight one five two four zero zero.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Bain, second by Commissioner Randall, any comment, Commissioner Bain? Randall?
No.
Anyone else? All right, go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries six zero with Mr. McPherson being absent, moving on, next item on the agenda, Planning Director's Report, item number five, Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities Plan Update.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, the planning department recently conducted some community outreach meetings on our bike pedestrian plan, and we had fairly nice turnout, there was approximately forty people at the first meeting, and then ten at the second. We also had a survey that we put out online, asking people for their comments with regard to the bike ped plan, we had initially come up with a draft alignment of potential bike routes, and it had typical sections that could be applied to bike lanes as well as pedestrian areas. We received over three hundred and fifty responses from the survey, so we think we've got some pretty good feedback with regard to that endeavor. So the next step for the staff is to take and assimilate the comments that we got from the survey, as well as comments we got from the public meetings, and reincorporate that into the draft maps, as well as the typical sections for the bike and ped trails. After that, the next step would be for us to come back to the Planning Commission with a draft plan element, and potentially move that forward to public hearing, so we look forward to bringing that back to the Planning Commission next month or so.
Excellent, thank you.
If I could make a comment, I attended one of those meetings, and I was, I was really encouraged by the number of people that were there, I was discouraged to find out that there's no county funding, direct funding for bike and pedestrian paths, that everything has to either be through VDOT as a, a portion of their road improvements, or through grants that would be requested or applied for, and I just want to go on record that I think the county should be trying to fund some of these recreational activities for staff, or for residents.
And, Madam Chairman, the next item is talking about the e-commerce text amendment, in particular, the Planning Commission previously had a public hearing on this, and after the Planning Commission's public hearing, we were preparing for the board hearing, we realized that there was some adjustments that still needed to be made to the ordinance, Ms. Blackburn can provide more detail with regard to the amendment, we will have to hold another public hearing on the revised amendment.
You just want to hit us with the highlights?
Yes.
And then we'll all take a vote to send it to public hearing.
Madam Chairman, planning commissioners, as Mr. Harvey stated, this was having to go back before you all, due to some additional zoning districts that were included with the home business and e-commerce terms being replaced, and on, in your staff report, well, we brought this before you in July, and you asked to have lot widths of these various districts, and these happen to be the planned development districts, and they were the PD one, the PD two, the planned traditional neighborhoods, which are called PT and D, the residential development area one, Boswell Corner, and also in the ordinance was the UD, and the plan on this entire ordinance, besides creating an e-commerce definition, was to also deal with the home business one and make it a by right use for single-family detached dwellings, and in these particular zoning districts, they weren't, they weren't to begin with, they were all special exceptions, and to just replace that term with home business would have gone from a special exception in the PD one and PD two, conditional use permits in the planned traditional neighborhood, and the residential development, the RDA, as we all know, for the residential development area in Boswell Corner, and in the UD, they were special exceptions, and in the staff report, I state, because of the characteristics of these developments, and they tend to be compact developments with smaller lots and narrower streets, and the lot dimensions, as you can see from the chart, range from eighteen feet to a hundred and twenty feet wide, and the setbacks are six feet to fifty feet, it may be not possible for the home business ones with our requirements for parking and customer visits to be able to be accommodated in these developments, and I had made a recommendation that they may want to be done by a special exception, because then they can, if they come forward asking to do one of these, we could mitigate potential impacts to the neighborhoods, and also have time limits placed on them, and the special exceptions I heard before the BCA, or Board of Zoning Appeals. It was also brought to my attention, after this had been printed, that it may be that we do allow for them, and if they cannot meet the requirements, then they just don't meet the requirements that we have placed on the home business one, but do allow them as a permitted use, as we have been allowing them in the other districts with single-family dwellings, and so I am asking for guidance on this.
Ms. Appicella?
Madam Chairman, as I, as I look at home business one, again, there are certain requirements that have to be met, in all cases, no employees other than the family members who reside at the, at the dwelling, no substantial increases in vehicular traffic, customers by appointments, that they have to provide an off-street parking space, if they had a large vehicle, they'd have to park it off-street, there's no outdoor storage, and they can't engage in retail or wholesale, sale, sale of merchandise, so I guess I'm of the mind that, I'm not really clear why, certainly a CUP would be necessary, if even a special exception would be necessary, I guess my view is, the rules themselves would, would govern when and if it's possible for someone in a single-family home in these respective districts to operate a home business, based on the existing requirements, I don't really see where having an additional layer of approval gets us anywhere, or helps the applicant, usually the Board of Zoning Appeals is going to go the other way, they're going to be more restrictive in terms of the conditions, not less restrictive than the existing rules, so I guess if, if, you know, if I had a choice here, I would say all residential uses should allow home businesses, home business one by right, including the other districts that are mentioned here.
Yeah, and I think we talked about that a little bit in our subcommittees, I think.
I think, I think, well, I don't know that we talked about PT and D, the planning districts.
Yeah, that was part of, we had centered so much on the more conventional zoning districts, to get the definitions and the requirements organized according to the majority of those lot sizes and those types of developments, and in doing the searches for home businesses is when these planned developments came up.
So, in the, in the RDA, was this an oversight, this, or, because I don't recall the requiring a conditional use permit, but is that a ten thousand dollar condition?
Now, this is how it is now.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I don't want that on me.
So, the other change I would recommend, if we were to move forward tonight with putting some language to a public hearing, on page six of eleven, attachment one, item four, it says fleet parking is permitted, well, that's something that we've discussed as, as a committee during the Act One changes, and we've actually removed fleet parking as a, as a use, a permitted use, I would recommend striking that out, and maybe you can help us understand what fleet parking is.
Was that page six of eleven?
Six of eleven, attachment one, item four. Close, close to the bottom.
Yep, go ahead.
Commissioner Appicella, fleet parking is off-site parking and storage of more than five operable vehicles, other than automobiles, which are used in the daily operation of a business, or the parking and storage of more than one vehicle with a gross weight in excess of ten thousand pounds, this does not include parking and storage of farm vehicles, construction equipment, or similar devices not licensed to operate on state roads. In the A one uses, which we will discuss later on in this meeting, it allowed for fleet parking as a by right use, I, and I defer to Ms. McLennan, in allowing it in a rural home business, I would, I would present, well, think that we are using it as an accessory tied to the rural home business, and not as a permitted use in the district.
I can look into that further, that information was not requested for tonight, so I'm not prepared to answer that question.
Again, if we, if we were to remove the first part of that sentence, fleet parking is permitted, including, or just, if we, if we struck from fleet parking is permitted, including the, and just started with parking and storing of farm vehicles, construction equipment, or similar devices not licensed to operate on state roads, is, is permitted, would that, would that work for you? Does it make sense?
Well, it would work unless the people had trucks that they used for their business.
Say, for instance, a roofing company or something operating out of their home, that might have five or six pickup trucks, or maybe a dump truck? That's just one example, I'm sure there are plenty more, towing company?
How many trucks do you have?
That many?
Well, I don't, I don't know how to fix this on the fly, I mean, I understand that that may be the case, and that some reasonable number of vehicles parked on the site associated with that business makes sense, but there's a point where there's probably too many.
Yeah, 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 fifty would be too many.
I don't think we need to go to committee again. I think, could we advertise it with, like, you know, no more than five fleet, like it says, and then if we go higher, then that's okay, so if we decide that the best number is eight or nine, or is five too many, and you want to advertise at two?
I missed the five part, is that, is that the definition?
That's part of the definition.
That's in the definition?
That's in the definition.
So, so you're saying that to define fleet parking says no more than five, up to five, as a minimum five?
Off-street parking and storage of more than five.
More than five.
So it'd be six and up.
Six and up, so...
Well, so if we said, as you just indicated, the parking of no more than five vehicles, would that, would that work?
I don't know how big your phone button is or what.
Well, I mean, well, yeah, but then you, I mean, basically we're saying you can't have more than five, so...
And most HOs...
I'm not sure how many people have something like that.
Yeah.
Well, this is for the rural home business.
Right.
Which is permitted in the A one zone.
We're not talking about the suburbs.
No.
Yeah.
Minimum of three acres.
But rural home business can be on a large farm that has multiple vehicles associated with the farm operation.
Yeah, farm is exempt.
And so how would you?
Well, this is another suggestion, and...
That's why if you take fleet parking out, that statement out, there would be no limit on the other parking that was, that's listed. So if you just say the parking and storing of farm vehicles, construction equipment, or similar devices not licensed to operate, that would make it unlimited, there would be no limit to that, the limit comes from the fleet parking statement.
The other suggestion, and I don't know if this will work either, we can ask Ms. McLennan, is in the ag uses, in the A one uses, fleet parking was struck, now that's still in its total discussion stage, and if we did not completely strike fleet parking, but said fleet parking as accessory to a rural home business.
I, I don't understand the distinction there, though.
If you don't have a home business, you can, you can park cars on, you can park trucks on, on property, just park them there.
If you don't have a home business?
Yeah, but now, you can.
If I have a home business?
If it's...
If it's a certified license, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And it has to be, which are used in a daily operation of a business, so if Mr. Boswell wanted to have a piece of property in A one zone, and Mr. English had a plumbing company, you could park your vehicles on his property, and you didn't have to have the business there.
Madam Chairman, I guess we probably need to take another look at this, and maybe staff can come forward with a more concrete recommendation on how to deal with a limited number of regular vehicles, as well as other types of non-licensed vehicles on a, on a parcel associated with a rural business, because I really don't know what that number should look like on the fly.
Can we bring this back September twenty-sixth to discuss?
Well, can I make a recommendation, maybe, then, and just see how this sounds, do we want to, I like the idea of removing the fleet parking is permitted, including, and just, and just leave it at the parking and storing of farm vehicles, and then maybe address fleet parking in a separate paragraph, a sentence, second, separate sentence, that addresses it individually, so you're not having to look for it, per se?
Right, but I think the point is, it's not just about farm vehicles, what if you have bulldozers and, you know, other construction equipment that you're parking on your site, because you operate a, you know, a home improvement business, that's probably too small a scale, but, you know, you have twenty acres, and you want to put your construction equipment there, so I don't think it's just, I don't think it's just farm equipment, right?
Do we, so we want, we want...
It's a bulldozer is farm.
Right.
Yeah, I certainly would, too.
We, would we want to get in the fact of, of, of going to a twenty acre, saying, okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, oh, you got ten, you only are allowed nine? Would we get to that point?
I don't, the, I guess, for the bottom line, I don't know what the right answer is, I mean, it's just now coming up that we might need to make some distinctions here.
I totally see it, though, because I know contractors who have, like, three or four work trucks, that for their staff, you know, their employees, they have, you know, an excavator...
They come in their car and go to the work truck and go to work.
Exactly, and they have an excavator, a bobcat, a cat, like, you know, they have like four or five different pieces of equipment, plus trailers to tow some of the stuff with, you can get up to five, real quick, I mean, I have more than five. Luckily, it's farm equipment, so don't come.
My next question is...
Yeah, so, and I think if you have twenty acre, I mean, that's kind of why you buy the land, so, I, I think we just need some more time, I think you're right, let's just look at it over the next couple of weeks.
Now that we brought it up, do what you can, and come up with a recommendation, and we can definitely look at it at our next meeting.
And, and also make the changes with respect to eliminating CUP and special exceptions for those other categories.
Yes, that's all, yeah, I think we're agreed on that part of it.
All right, and in some of those districts, like in the UD district, single-family homes are only allowed in the one and two... are only allowed in the one and two, I forget what they're called, one and two sections, so it will end up being, striking things out of other parts of the code, and I will get that to you next time, to show you. It's just, it's cleaning it up. Single-family homes are not allowed in the other sections of the UD code. And so a home business, there's no reason to even state that they're allowed or not allowed, because they're only allowed in single-family homes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we're good.
I had a couple of other comments.
Okay, go ahead.
On page five of 11 of the ordinance, in the paragraph that starts home business rural, there's a typographical problem there. If you read down to where the strikeout is, it says outside storage, the sentence doesn't make any sense. It says, construction uses which may include, and then it goes down, of materials necessary to the conduct of, so either the word of has to go out, or something else.
Did, do you have storage in there?
No.
Which may include.
Oh, 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 I see, storage, oh, I missed that, I thought that was part of the cross-out. My, my fault, sorry. The other comment I had, under the home business rural, on page six, paragraph number five, the rural home business shall not engage in retail or wholesale goods of merchandise, or merchandise to customers directly on the premises. For the home business one and two, a similar statement was made, but they said, however, direct sales shall equal to the number of customer visits allowed per day. And I, I think something like that should be included under the home business rural as well. Why wouldn't you allow them to have some limited retail sale on site, if you're going to allow for a home business?
Yeah, I think the problem is, you, you're not limiting, the distinction here is, one and two limit the number of customers, right? We don't have that limitation on here. You could have an, an, infinite is too high a word, but you could have an extreme number of customers, so we were, we were trying to avoid turning this into a different kind of a business operating out of somebody's house, where they have a lot of customers.
And you can still have a home business one.
In a rural area.
Oh, okay, okay.
This is not limiting you to only.
Or a home business two, it, you know, up to 10.
A home business rural.
So, in the interest of keeping things moving, if we have additional recommendations, let's just email it to you, we'll work it out between now and September 26th.
Thank you, ma'am.
Perfect. Okay, next one, amendments to RBC zoning district referral.
Yes, Madam Chairman, Silver Companies has requested this amendment, and they've also applied for a proffer amendment to expand the retirement housing component within the Celebrate Virginia Project. As you may recall, Celebrate Virginia is currently zoned recreational business campus. The original concept behind that was that there's going to be a large office park with a variety of retail uses that could support it, and also some, a golf course, and other recreational amenities to be ancillary and supportive of the large business campus. However, as time has gone along, that original vision has morphed. Right now, there's a substantial retirement community there, and the proposal is to expand and create a second retirement community. If that were to occur, there need to be changes to the open space ratio. Right now, the open space required for the overall district is 45%, and the open space would need to be reduced by, down to 30%. And, and reviewing the request, staff made a number of recommendations, because the way the development is occurring in that zoning district, it's no longer primarily focused on business, it's becoming more of a mixed-use district. So staff is suggesting that the name of the district be changed from RBC Recreational Business Campus to PD3 Plan Development 3. Also, we're suggesting that some of the commercial uses that are not, or industrial uses are not compatible with residential activity be removed from the zoning district. Also, there are some unnecessary uses that are specified as far as recreational activities that probably need to be taken care of as a general cleanup of the, the district regulations. As I mentioned about the open space, likewise, there also need to be a percentage increase in what's allowed as far as age-restricted housing within the project, and then reorganizing our ordinance, because right now, the PD3, excuse me, the RBC zone has a number of performance standards in one section of the code, and it should probably be moved to the planned district standards. And staff was suggesting that the planning commission consider moving this forward to a public hearing, but maybe not set a date at this point in time. We do have the rezoning application that's floating forward, and it may be beneficial to consider both at the same time, but that's up to discretion of the commission.
Does anybody have any comments?
Madam Chairman, I'm, I'm going to have a lot of questions on this, it looks like it's a big change. I would suggest that we not move this forward to a public hearing, and have this as a regular agenda item, and have normal, you know, a, a more thorough briefing package and discussion back and forth before we decide how to proceed forward on this.
Okay, can we do that, Jeff?
Yes, ma'am. And the next item is dealing with transfer of development rights. And earlier today, Mr. Appicella reminded me that there were several commissioners who were not involved in the process of creating the TDR ordinance, which was adopted in 2015. So, at your desk, we've attached a map which shows the transfer of development rights area. With transfer of development rights, it's one of the few tools that state code gives us that allows us to directly influence where development can occur and not occur. It's a voluntary program, and you have certain areas in the county where you say you want to discourage development, and encourage them to relocate that development to another part of the county. So the map you have in front of you, the blue area is the sending area, where we would discourage development and encourage people to sever their development rights. And the red area, which is in proximity to this location where we're at here, near the courthouse in Route One, Courthouse Road, all the way down to Eskimo Hill Road, would be a receiving area where someone could land those development rights. And it's a by right activity, and it's a voluntary activity between property owners. The code sets out standards for what is eligible to, for people to determine their development rights, and how many development rights they have, in a sending area, for where they want to send them to the receiving area. This proposed code amendment would do two things. One, it would clarify that if you have an existing lot of record, at the time we adopted the TDR ordinance in 2015, that you would be entitled to at least one development right on that lot. Because we've had a couple of inquiries from specifically in Crowsnest Harbor, where someone has a lot, and under our current regulations, they have to go through an analysis to see if they're entitled to a development right, and they have to hire an engineer to do that. So if they're, have one lot, and are willing to limit themselves to one development right, this proposed amendment would allow them to do so without having to go through the detailed analysis. Also, from a fairness perspective, if, under the current scenario, you could do the analysis and determine you have no development rights for your property, but they could still potentially develop that property and put a house on it. So this would potentially incentivize some people to participate in the program. The other part of the amendment deals with when you actually transfer those development rights from the sending area, and land them on a piece of property in the receiving area. In doing so, they have to record a deed to extinguish those development rights, and affix it to the zoning of the property in the receiving area. Right now, there's two mechanisms in which they do that. One is a preliminary subdivision plan, and two is a site plan, in, in the case of commercial development. So the way the ordinance is written now, if you have property in, that you've severed in the sending area, it's equivalent to one dwelling unit per development rate, or 3,000 square feet of commercial space per development rate. So if someone wanted to do a residential project, for every development right they added to the property, they could do one more house. If they wanted to do a commercial project, for every development right they add to their property, they can do three more thousand square feet of, of floor space. The amendment would modify for the residential part, that the developer could wait until sever their development rights and affix them to the property at time of record plat, rather than preliminary subdivision plan. We've had that request by a property owner who's wanting to participate in a TDR program, but they have a number of things going on, because they have the property owner for the sending area, and they're somewhat related to the property owner in the receiving area, but there's a developer involved and a home builder involved, and there's a lot of contract issues. So in order to facilitate this, they say that if, they have to fix all the development rights at, at the time of preliminary plan, that puts the developer and home builder at risk, because they have to essentially buy those development rights from somebody, and be willing to put them on a piece of property that they don't own. So that puts them at substantial risk, so that's why they would prefer to, and have requests that we consider allowing the, fixing the development rights for residential to be postponed to a record plat. In doing, when they record the record plats, and under their contract agreements, and that's when they would take possession of those lots, and, and everyone be kept whole. That's the rationale behind this request.
No comments, Mr. Appicella?
Madam Chairman, we spent over five years coming up with the TDR legislation. I chaired the subcommittee that worked on it a good number of those years. There was a lot of consternation and back and forth, both within the planning commission and at the board level, to finally getting to a, a TDR package that everybody could agree to. At first blush, I don't really have a problem with the changes to section 28 dash 364, but in, in looking at the proposed change to 28 359A, I'm sorry, B, what I would say is, that proposed change looks a lot like a provision that was referred to the commission back in 2013. We discussed it all the way through 2014. I looked at all the agenda packages, both at the PC level and at the board level, it was rejected by the planning commission, and the board ultimately decided not to include that, I'll call it guarantee, of a development right. And I think the logic trail was, and is, that not every single lot, and the sending area is primarily Crowsnest, am I correct? Mr. Harvey?
Mr. Appicella, it includes the Crowsnest Peninsula, but also the Marlborough Point Peninsula?
Right, no doubt. But if you're familiar with the Crowsnest area, if you've ever been out there, in my humble opinion, not every lot is buildable. Some of those lots have ravines that are incredible. I mean, it's a beautiful area, don't get me wrong, and I, I can't speak to why folks bought lots there, you know, and so, and my understanding is, with respect to Crowsnest Harbor, there's about 350 lots, about 80 owners, which means there are multiple, some people who own multiple lots. Again, in my opinion, not every lot is buildable. So, why would we grant somebody a development right to transfer that development right, where they couldn't build on their parcel in the first place? So I think we need to take a hard look at this, and see if it's the right way ahead, at least with respect to that change. I think we need some more information to see which lots would be impacted by the proposed change. Again, TDR is a pretty complex and comprehensive piece of legislation, so I would ask that we, again, not move forward tonight, try to get some more information, see which lots would be impacted, and why this change is necessary, and when and if it makes sense, and what public interest is served by giving somebody a development right where they couldn't otherwise build on their parcel.
Sounds good to me, so can we do that, Jeff? Get more information, and then?
Yes, ma'am, we can bring it back to the next meeting with some more information.
Okay, perfect. All right, next one?
And the next one is amendments to our comprehensive plan pursuant to our DEQ audit. They identified that we needed to have additional language in our comprehensive plan dealing with shoreline and stream bank erosion issues, so this proposed amendment would help address those comments from DEQ.
Okay. Do we need any action on that?
Madam Chairman, if it's a desire of the commission, we can move forward with a public hearing.
I still move for a public hearing on this one.
Okay, so we have a motion to move forward with public hearing, by Commissioner English, second by Bain. Any discussion, anybody? Let's go ahead and vote for it. Okay, motion carries 6-0 with Mr. McPherson being absent. All right, county attorneys report.
I have them reported this time, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. McLendon. Committee reports, A1 uses, subcommittee.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Commission members. The A1 uses, the planning commission is, you are considering submitting this, a proposed ordinance to the Board of Supervisors for their review prior to any public hearing, and this is proposed ordinance O1835, and it amends the uses and how they're permitted in the agricultural district. And this was a resolution requested by the planning commission provide recommended changes to the uses of the ag district, and this was a result of the Board of Zoning Appeals questioning the compatibility of the permitted uses in this zoning district. And a committee was formed by the planning commission, and it consisted of Commissioners Darrell English, Stephen Appicella, and Albert Bain, and two additional members from the agricultural community, who was Mr. John Howe, and he is the chairman of the Agricultural PDR Committee and a retired extension agent, and Mr. John Harris, who owns a farm and is a former planning commissioner, and both of these members did bring valuable insight into the committee. And the committee met in December of 2017, January, April, and May of 2018, and they revised and discussed every use that is currently listed in the district, and reviewed the regulations for uses in the zoning district of the following counties, and they were Albemarle, Falkir, Hanover, Loudon, Prince William, and Spotsylvania. And the recommendations of the committee were to remove several uses, change the approval process for some, and add a minimum acreage requirement to others. And I have provided a copy of a draft ordinance for you showing strike-throughs and underlined uses, and a chart with a synopsis of most of them. Fleet parking is removed, and there were several uses added. And through the discussions, there were a few items that the committee felt the entire planning commission needed to review, and one was wedding venues, wedding and event venues, which are now treated as a rural home business, as a special exception in an A1 zone, and those special exceptions are heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals. And we would, the, one of the, part of the discussion group was to actually name them as a use, to be permitted by special exception, and actually do some acreage requirements. Because one of the big complaints we've heard from neighbors when these have come before the Board of Zoning Appeals, is the amount of noise and the amount of traffic that are going to be generated. And if the venue is on a large or parcel, noise levels can be reduced by providing greater distance from the venues, from the neighbors, and also depending on screening, but one of the suggestions was to add an acreage requirement to it. Then there was the discussion of dog kennels. And we allow for commercial and non-commercial kennels in the A1 zone, and a commercial kennel is permitted by conditional use permit, and it is a location used for boarding, breeding, grooming, and/or training six or more dogs for pecuniary gain. And the non-commercial definition is exactly the same, except it's not for pecuniary gain. And the committee did ask Animal Officer Michael Knoll to come to our meeting and give his input into how, what he knows about kennels, and, and how to deal with them. And one of our big discussion points was the noise from the barking dogs. And talking about setbacks from property. about setbacks from property lines and this kind of thing. And he said, making the distances would help some, but it is not going to eliminate them at all. But he did state that he would suggest a kennel be allowed on lots of six acres for six dogs and require an acre for each additional dog. And the rationale behind this was it would prevent kennels from being located in the minimum lot subdivisions for the A1 zones, which are three acres, and it would be increasing the distance from the adjacent dwellings, and it would help with mitigating the sound. And he also believed, as a sidelight of discussing increasing the acreage requirement for the keeping of livestock with an item that needed discussing, and the concern is that property owners on three-acre lots would want horses, cows, chickens, or a combination thereof. And one of the suggestions was to require a conservation plan approved by the Soil and Water Conservation District to help with this, because there are no acreage requirements for keeping these animals. But the committee did state that this was outside the purview of what they were asked to do, but just as a item that it was comprehensively reviewed. And after reviewing the lists, the staff suggests the planning commission also consider recommending changing the approval process for the commercial kennels from a conditional use permit to a special exception, because it does allow for that time limit, and it does not stay with the land. And also, there were two items. It was agritourism and farm winery that were also added. And the farm winery definition that is in your packet is straight from the state code, and it is very, very long. And I would like guidance on how you want to deal with that, if we want to just refer to the state definition, because it goes into if it is made in the Commonwealth, if it's a percentage of this. And they have a very, they have become with a very strong lobby, and they, they're here. And it is, it's a lovely tourist thing, you know, it's a great place. I'm sure everybody has gone to vineyards for wine tasting. And so it would be to just refer to the definition, because that may actually be changing. That was one item I wondered. And the agritourism, I did include that definition in your draft ordinance, and that is also from the state, straight from the state code.
So we could just put in there the footnote, see state code and reference to those two?
I can, if, I can do that with some guidance from legal, if we want to do a very minimum type of description, and then see state code.
I think we should just stay, go under the state code with the state code. That's, that's what I recommend. And the other thing is too, we need to remove the cemetery one, because we have a county ordinance on cemeteries, so I think that trumps all by right, so I think they need to eliminate that. Is that correct, Ms. Sheeda? Taking that cemetery out of that by right, because we have a county code for that?
Cemetery as a use needs to be provided in the zoning ordinance. If you remove it from the by right category, I'm not sure if it's provided for elsewhere in our zoning ordinance.
Even if we have a code, I mean, county code on cemeteries, we still-
The cemetery ordinance is provided in our special regulations. This section provides a use. So I know we're looking at A1. I would say staff needs to come back to the planning commission with more information to provide information whether or not cemetery is provided for in another part of our zoning ordinance. I'm not sure if it is.
Can we do that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, that's what I'm asking.
Madam Chairman, I, just kind of going through the, I'll call, before I can have a better term, a checklist here on additional things to consider. I think we just need some more information on wedding and events venues, potential definition, and maybe how some other jurisdictions handle a similar use, so we can see how we might apply it here in Stafford. On, on dog kennels, I think we should adopt and include in the language going forward, or when it comes back to us, the recommendation provided by Officer Knoll, which again is a kennel be allowed on lots of six acres for six dogs and require an acre for each additional On the keeping of livestock, I think having a conservation plan would be a good thing. I'm just not sure how it, how it would work in terms of the language we would need to incorporate into this A1 district change.
Well, that was, we don't have, the question would be to Ms. McLendon, if we could include that in this proposed changes to the ordinance, because it was considered somewhat out of the scope of the resolution.
Right, but if we were to it-
If we can.
If we can, I'm just, I'm not sure how it would look in terms of, if I were looking at the ordinance, or how A1 is described, I don't know how it fits.
Okay.
So maybe you can come back to us and show us.
Well, DEQ has regulations regarding like the requirements-
Oh, I understand, I'm just saying, in terms of, if you're looking at the zoning regulations and you see A1, and you see livestock, I'm not even sure if it's explained, or there's a definition for livestock, would it be under the definition? Where does that requirement for, for the, for the, for the management plan and review by Soil and Water, how does that get tied together?
Okay, I can, I can work on that. Also, there has been some discussion to refer to some of these things through the Chapter Five, which is animals. And they have a whole list of definitions of caring for animals, how much space you have to have, you know, various things like that. And if we want to incorporate some of this into these changes, then I can go through and see what we can do with that, because that would help us with situations of keeping chickens and other livestock on small acres of land. We have A1 lots that are only an acre, and we have nothing to stop them from crowding animals on there.
That was-
Which does not work well for all involved.
Yeah, that was a comment I was going to make. I know of a landowner who had less than five acres, raised three hogs on that property. Their neighbors were not real happy. They killed the hogs and then called our farm to come and get them and slaughter them, except that they didn't have any way to get them out of their backyard that was completely fenced in. So we had to tear down part of their fence to get it. So I think acreage requirements are very important.
So again, it might be a combination of both looking at the definitions and an acreage requirement, not just with regard to A1, but other zoning districts as well, right?
Okay.
And lastly, I think the other change that was recommended is commercial kennels being approved by special exception. I think that'd be fine.
Okay. Any other comments?
Again, those are just my comments.
Any comments from anybody else?
I have, yes, I have a couple of comments. I'm concerned that we're going to relitigate this whole thing again, that, what the things we're talking, yes, they need to be addressed, but it is A1 for a reason. I don't know to what extent we want to get down in the nitpicking and say, you can have three chickens, you can't have two chickens, you can have four dogs, you can't have three dogs.
I think the concern-
So I'm concerned that we're, we're going to get down a rabbit's hole, and then who's going to be out there counting how many, how many chickens they have, or how many dogs they have, or, you know, let's be reasonable, and the fact that it is A1, it is three acres, you understand if you're moving into a three-acre lot-
Well, I think Mr. Bain's point is that you, some A1 lots are one acre, so maybe that, you know, since the standard should be A1, three acres.
Right, and this is a, I mean, three-acre lots wanting horses and stuff, so it's a, it's a three acre.
Yeah, I definitely don't think you should have a horse on one acre. That's not enough. I have two, and that is not, two horses, and that's not enough space.
So, that's, that's my only concern, is that we, we understand that it is an A1 lot, you buy, you get it on an A1, you understand what that means, and then we, anyway, that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay.
Okay.
We're good?
We're good.
All right. Can you bring, have that back September 26th, or do you need more time?
I should be able to do it by then, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for all your hard work on this, and to the A1 Subcommittee.
Cluster Ordinance Subcommittee, okay. Stephen and I are going to discuss a date and have that by the next meeting for our first Cluster Ordinance Map Meeting, and I think Bart, Al, do you guys have any updates?
We're going to, we're going to get together next Thursday. I was going to talk to Fillmore until he ran out, so-
Because they have to advertise it, so.
Oh, okay.
Just make sure that you work with staff to give enough time for advertising.
How many, how many days do you need prior?
Three, I think. Seventy-two hours.
Okay, I'll let you know by the end of the week.
Yes, and if we could build in more time, it'd be helpful, because we have to work through our communication staff to ensure it's posted properly and-
Sure.
Five, five days is preferable.
Five days is preferable?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Chairman's report, I have none at this time. Other business TRC dates take of note. Approval of minutes, July 18. Do we have a motion?
Still move.
Mr. English, motion to approve meeting minutes. Second by Commissioner Randall, any discussion? Nope. All right, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries six zero. Mr. McPherson is absent, and the meeting is adjourned.